Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council. Mayor Skip Henderson. City manager Isaiah Hubley. Pops Barnes, District 1. Glenn Davis, District 2. Bruce Huff, District 3. Valerie Thompson, District 4. Charmaine Crabbe, District 5. Gary Allen, Mayor Pro Tem and District 6. Mimi Woodson, District 7. Walker Garrett, District 8. Judy Thomas, Post 9 at Large Counselor. John House, Post 10 at Large Counselor. Sandra Davis, Clerk of Council. And City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council.
Welcome to the January 14th City Council meeting. For those of you that missed first one, Happy New Year. And we're going to begin this meeting as we do all of the meetings. That's by invoking God's presence on these proceedings. I don't know if our pastor's here, the Apostle Lyndon Townsend, Sr. I'm going to ask the Mayor Pro Tem if he wouldn't mind praying for her.
Glad to, Mayor, thank you. Let us pray. God, we come to you now thanking you for another year. We ask your blessings on this year as we deliberate your business. Be with our city staff, Father, as they conduct the city business daily. Continue to be with our public safety officials as they continue to serve and protect our citizens. We thank you for all you do for us. We ask your blessings on all citizens in Columbus. And ask these things in my Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Next, our pledge will be led by the Columbus Parks and Recreation Therapeutic Group. Some of them have medals around their necks. Y'all want to come up? Sandra, if you would get the... The rest of you, if you please, stand to your feet.
Our prayers are issues to the flag of the United States and America and to the public who understands one nation under God and it is about liberty and justice for all.[187.26][187.26](Applause)
Y'all don't go anywhere. Don't go anywhere. We want you to introduce yourselves so everybody knows who you are. Y'all did such a good job. We're so proud of y'all. Y'all, tell us who you are.
I'm Deandra Thornton.
My name is McCabe. So you're here today.
Rebecca Seahan.
Michael.
Brandon Watson.
Well, y'all did a great job. Now, tell me what the medals are. You got... Some of y'all are wearing medals. Tell me what those are for.
Ten of them.
Ten of them.
Columbus Special Olympics.
Special Olympics. You guys competed, I think, with people from all over the state?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, you guys are all champions. We appreciate it very much. Congratulations. Columbus is proud of you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, typically, we handle proclamations the first meeting of every month. We had an occurrence that happens, unfortunately, all too often in our community where there's need for assistance from our public safety individuals. And Counselor Thomas asked that they be recognized. They do what they do, and they do it all the time. But occasionally, it rises to the level of a little bit above and beyond. So Counselor Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If the folks from the Fire EMS Police Department, if you'd come to the podium, all of you, everyone of you, come on up here. There are a number of these folks who are coming that were involved in this incident. And I'm going to name some of the names in the resolution, but just know that all of these first responders were there that night and were involved. So with that, whereas on Tuesday, January 7th, 2020, Columbus Fire and EMS, Columbus Police, and Community Ambulance responded to the report of a home fire located at 5442 Susan Lane. And whereas the initial responding units found the house on fire with a report of a citizen trapped inside, whereas Fire EMS Orlando Ford and John Russell entered the structure and fought through the flames to reach the victim. And whereas Police Corporal Gary Marshall and Officer First Class John Poe were able to forcibly remove a window-mounted air conditioning unit, further assisted by Officer First Class Michael Bacon, Officer John Han, and Sergeant Michael Danke in receiving the victim from firefighters through this window. And whereas the resident would surely have perished if not for their efforts. And whereas the Columbus Department of Fire and EMS and the City of Columbus are forever grateful for our fellow first responders. And whereas all citizens of Columbus, Georgia, and employees of the Columbus Consolidated Government recognize and appreciate the contribution made to the public and by these outstanding employees. Now, therefore, BH Skip Henderson, the third mayor of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim Tuesday, January 20th, 2020, as First Responder Teamwork Day. Mr. Mayor, if I can, I had one of these officers say to me, this was just in the line of duty. What we do every day was no big deal. It was a really big deal to that woman that was lying on the floor. And we want to thank you so much. And I think this is just another one of those examples where our departments all work together and do whatever is necessary. And I know that firefighter Ford is going to... Wants to say something. Firefighter, come to the mic there if you would, to the podium there, over there.
Good morning, y'all. This fire came in early in the morning, like any other fire. So we arrived on scene, you know, I see smoke and whatnot billowing out the building, and I see officers running, which is kind of unusual because officers normally, you know, have the crowd control. So I figure, well, what's everybody running for, you know? Because I didn't hear it was a victim trapped inside. So as my partner and I entered the structure, we put out the fire, and I hear my Lieutenant, Lieutenant Taylor saying, "Keep going, keep going." And I'm like, "What's going on?" You know, the fire's out. And I see the officers' flashlights, and I hear their voices, and we go back and stumble upon the victim who was apparently unconscious. So my partner and I, we picked her up, and we put her out the window to the officers waiting. And it showed great teamwork, what we did, and also demonstrated the kind of training that we have with the Columbus Fire Department. They prepare us for any kind of situation, and it definitely paid off that night.
Outstanding.
Thank you, sir.
And firefighter Ford, I appreciate you mentioning the training because I tell you, there are no better or finer and more completely trained individuals in the public safety field than our public safety officers across all the different departments. And we just want to thank you guys so much. You know, they can give you all the training in the world, but if you don't come packed with your own courage, it ain't going to work. So if y'all would, come around, let us shake your hand. Oh, first, tell us your name and let us know who you are. We want the public to be able to see what fine heroes we have in Columbus, Georgia.
Officer John Poe.
Officer Han.
Officer Bacon.
Officer Kevin Gibson.
Corporal Gary Marshall.
Sergeant Mike Danke.
Fire Sergeant Albert Rose.
Firefighter Ford.
Lieutenant Alonso Taylor.
Battalion Chief Sam Bush.
Thank y'all for what you did.
Y'all give them one more round of applause, please.[664.63][664.63](Applause) Thank you, Counselor Thomas, for that recognition. That they... You know, they really do stuff like this all day, every day. I mean, we're... Everybody knows we're short of our police officers. Sometimes they don't even get a bite to eat. They're running from one call to another. They never stop. Our firefighters and our first responders with C. Columbus Fire and Emergency Medical Services do the same thing. So they... When you see them, thank them. Next up, we've got a transit... Transition Audit Report on the Columbus Civic Center going to be presented by our auditor, Mr. Redmond. Oh, the minutes. I do this all the time. I will entertain a motion on approving the minutes. There's a motion?
Second.
And second. Any edits? Any questions about the minutes? All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Good. Now, we'll bring Mr. Redmond up. Thank you, counsel.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Manager, Mr. Attorney. It's good to see y'all today and clerk. Today's report is on the transition audit of the Civic Center. You may recall, Mr. Dormand left back last, I guess, May or June, and on June 11th, y'all requested that we do a transition audit. It was motioned by Counselor House and seconded by Counselor Woodson and unanimously approved. So we proceeded with that. Again, as I've told you earlier, transition audits include about six areas that we look at. We look at the operations, budgetary performance, fixed asset verification, payroll audit, access controls, and then follow-up on previous areas of concern. The operations are reflected, very normal operating activity occurring. The professional hockey is returning to the Civic Center and has returned now, following a two-year absence. So it was noted that several mid-level management positions have recently experienced some turnover, including the marketing manager, events manager, and the events coordinator. The director position remains vacant with Deputy City Manager Goodwin filling that role on an interim basis. All scheduled assets were verified and located. Payroll was audited and found to be correct, and all employees paid were determined to exist and be actively employed in the workplace. The budgetary performance was reviewed for the most recent three-year period and found to be consistent with prior periods during the observance of the absence of hockey. Other events were plugged in to fill the void and produce revenue for the center during that time. I think they did an outstanding job of covering that. But it's nice to have hockey back in the building again. Recent months reflect monthly improvements, recognizing that fall and winter and spring are the most heavily booked, with summer being a little less active. But the operating cash position improved in fiscal year 19 and is compared to the past year. So that meant that they had some money in the bank when they got to the end of the year, and that's sometimes not always the case. The box office vault security was something we had had some issues with some years ago. We checked those controls and found them to provide adequate protection and control of the funds and the ticket stock that's stored inside. The venue complimentary tickets were found to be used consistent with the number of contracts we allowed per event sampled. Events were randomly selected by type and date throughout the most recent 12-month period. And y'all may recall that some years ago, we had some issues with the improper use of those tickets, overuse of them. The only recommendation we have is, obviously, this would be up to the city managers to fill the director position with a candidate possessing the requisite education, professional certifications, and work experience in a similar facility when they can be selected and hired. Any questions? I will say we had an all or two response. Ms. Goodwin acknowledged, yes, there have been several departures of mid-level positions since April of last year. Each of these departures have proven to improve the level and quality of service provided by the Civic Center team. New events and marketing team came in with a new and fresh set of eyes and zeal for creating a great experience for those hosting and attending events. And she had several promoters that commended them doing that. And also, according to Angelique Alexander, our finance director, fiscal year 2019 was the first time in about 10 years the Civic Center has ended the fiscal year with a positive operating cash balance. Of course, the city manager will make determination when to advertise and fill the position. Any questions?
Doesn't appear to be so. Mr. City Manager?
Mayor, I was asked a question. As you can see, it's in the audit report when we would fill the Civic Center Director's Position. And I hope to... I plan to at least advertise in the coming months, but my response was that I'd put it on pause for a short while because I wanted to further look at the Civic Center and its operations. It has been under the leadership of Deputy City Manager Lisa Goodwin since June of last year. And as you heard from the internal auditor and as I continue to talk to the finance director and the deputy city manager for finance, we do have a positive cash balance at the Civic Center. And it is the first time in 10 years that we've had a positive cash balance. We've had a change in leadership in a number of key positions, and they were very positive changes. And so I'm just looking at what's going on down there and the current leadership and the fact that we're still bringing quality family concerts and events. We are having great success at the Civic Center, and I must say it... Great success under the leadership of Deputy City Manager Lisa Goodwin as she wears all of her other hats.
Yes.
And so I do want to commend her and the Civic Center staff for the great job that they're doing. But we do intend to pursue a certified Civic Center Events Manager, and we will do that in the months to come, but we have not advertised it as of yet.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Before we leave my agenda, I just wanted to remind the public that we have an event coming up this weekend, this Saturday, that will commemorate the life and the service of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Under the previous mayor, we had created the Dream Lives Event, and it was a processional and recording artist would play at that venue. And we've changed it a little bit, tried to make it a very diverse event so that it would appeal to a very wide range of people in this community because we are a very diverse community. So I just want to remind people, rain or shine, we're going to meet at 11 o'clock on the corner of First Avenue and 10th Street, begin with a call to prayer, and from there, a processional will begin and end at the Trade Center. There'll be a short program around 12:30 to include a reenactment of Dr. Martin Luther King's famous speech in Washington by Spivey Green. And he does a great job, for those of you that have not heard that. Then at 1:30, the fun begins. We've got a concert that will feature everything from gospel music to Motown. We'll have Voices of the Valley, the Schwob Singers, Greater Mount Zion Baptist Church, Charles Robinson, the Magic of Motown, the Dream Lives Choir. There'll be a Kid Zone, stuff for the kids to do, bounce houses, entertainment games. There's an art show, both at an elementary school... It's not elementary school, but the school-aged children will be having an art show. And then there will be members of the Artist Guild and the Columbus Collective that will be showing pieces also in the venue. And going to wrap it up, the headliners begin about 3:00. Neil Lucas, Trey... Was it Privet or Pravat? Privet. Trey is a Brookstone graduate that has taken his music west of here, over close to California, and has a band. He's making waves nationally, and he's coming home. He's going to be here and be performing. And then we're going to finish it up with a DSOS band and just kind of wrap it up with a good old dance party. So we hope you'll attend. Right now, there's about 700 people that have signed up for the processional. We want 10 times that many. This is a very, very diverse community. We need to celebrate the unity that we strive so hard for. We want to see a lot of diversity at this event, and we hope you'll join us. And with that, I'll turn it over to our city attorney.
All right, thank you, Mayor. We have a few business items to cover this morning. First one up is a familiar rezoning. This is ready for a vote today. The Fortson Road-Hobbs Road-Waddell Petition is ready for action.
Move, Bruce. Counselor Davis? No, I just want to say, Mayor, even though this is a matter we discuss, and sometimes you have to use judgment, even though it's inconsistent with the general, the overall land use, we get a lot of those, it is compatible with the... Based on the report, it is compatible with the existing land uses. And I just want to remind everybody, there are several conditions on this, this rezoning request. It is contingent to the site plan. The site plan has changed since some of the stuff that went to the PAC, it was out in public. That plan has totally changed. The developer has come back, has put a better plan together that coordinates and works a lot better. A lot of green space is going to be saved, which is a good thing. So in light of that, and I've already said this, I would not be normally be in favor of a multifamily use in these areas. And if any other one comes, it's going to have to be subject to conditions. This developer was easy to work with and did it in such a way where it still kind of flows with the neighborhood and compatible with the uses that are there. There's a large piece of neighborhood commercial right across the street from it. I don't think most people really know that. So this is kind of a wall between things that are happening. I know the mayor, he was a council representative, was out there at the time we worked on this. So I just wanted to state that for the record. So this is not what it used to be before. It's changed substantially with several conditions contingent to the site plan, meaning that if it does not get built the way... Only one way, to lay it out on there. If not, then it reverts back to the use of residential. Thank you. And yeah, Counselor Davis, and I know Counselor Garrett has put some time in this as well, and it's been deliberated and looked at for a long time, and I commend y'all for working so hard with the residents and with the developers. So we have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? All right, if you queue it, Bruce, counselors, you can register your votes. Okay, I think we're... Might still be missing one. There we go.
Got it. Hey, that has passed. Mr. Riley, Mr. Waddell, thank y'all for being here. Mayor, next up are a couple of first readings. The first one is an ordinance that would put an moratorium in place for... Through August 4th, 2020, for the regulation and use of shared electronic scooters. This would be an extension so that those programs can be studied, and the General Assembly in Atlanta may act on these vehicles. So we want to make sure Columbus has enough time to see what the General Assembly does and then put something in place if they decide to allow them or do a trial program.
Okay, Counselor Thomas?
A couple of things, Mr. Mayor. I was listening to a news program yesterday about electric scooters nationwide, and one of the things they said was the company line, which is one of the ones that was wanting originally to come into Columbus, was pulling out of a lot of cities and were closing down a lot of their operations. And I'm wondering if we've had anybody express any interest in this? Are we doing this moratorium just so that if there is something coming out of the legislature? One of the items in that story that just sort of struck me was about 100 years ago or so, and I wasn't there, when bicycles first became... First came on the scene, they were banned all over the country. They were banned in Central Park. You couldn't ride a bicycle in Central Park in New York City because they got in the way of the traffic. And over the years, things have changed, and they were saying, "We may see the same thing with this e-scooter." But I'm wondering if there's still any... Anybody expressing an interest in doing this at this point, or we just sort of covering our bases here?
Mr. Jones might want to respond. I think we're just covering our bases, and it's a continuation, I think, of the previous request, just so that we can have said that we've studied it. And it may be that after we study it during this moratorium, if we decide we don't want them here, and we may have to enact some kind of local legislation outline a nap. Did you have anything?
Hang on, I'm getting there. There we go.
Mayor, I didn't catch all that you said because I was communicating with the planning director. But I will say, I think we are being just proactive because we don't have any laws on the books related to scooters, and someone could just come in now and just do something with scooters, and because we don't have any laws, there's nothing we can't stop them. And so we need to put something in place to say, "Not right now." And then, as we continue to look, study, wait to see what's going to come out of the state legislature, because it is on their list of things in the state legislature this session. And so it will give us a chance to see exactly what they are going to come out of the legislature with, and we just don't want someone to come in and set up shop, and we have no control, no rules. And so we are helpless. And so it's just a precautionary measure.
And at this point, however, there's not anyone actively seeking permission. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, we don't know of anyone at this time.
Okay. Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. For Thanksgiving, I went to Dallas, Texas, and I was able to ride a scooter from Daly Plaza, about two miles up the road, to another destination. And they're fun, they're exciting, but I do see where it's important for us to get in front of this and have a plan so that it's done properly. Because I don't know what the laws in Dallas were, but I saw that the scooters were set up nicely, they weren't just tossed around. They were convenient to get to, and it was a pleasant experience. I want, if we bring scooters to Columbus, for it to be a pleasant experience.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may follow up. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just... I was looking for the reports and recommendations... I just, I was looking for the reports and recommendations in the legislature, and the Senate Study Committee on Evaluating E-Scooters and Other Innovation Mobility Options for Georgians submitted their final report. Highlights include a call to preempt local governments from imposing jurisdictional specific requirements on providers of micro mobility devices, such as a limit to the number of devices operating in a jurisdiction or outright bans on their use. And so, just wanted to point out to you that it is going to, there's going to be a discussion in the legislative session, and we don't know what's going to come out, but at least it's put something in place that allows us to kind of see where it's going and what laws are going to come out, and then we can bring something to you to act on. So, I want to share that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on that topic? All right, we'll bring this back in two weeks for a vote. The next item, Mayor, is to put in a moratorium not to exceed 90 days on certificates of occupancy for a Type 1 personal care home or foster care home. This is the six person or less home, and Mr. Hutchinson's here. You want to say a few words? So, give him time to do an inventory and...
Morning, counsel. Just really want to kind of stay on top of this and keep giving you guys information as we find out information and keep evolving this and figuring out how to best contain these concerns we have for the city. So, since June of this, June of last year, we've gone through, we've started to sort those certificate of occupancies, because we told you our original concern was that we didn't have them separated between youth and adults. And so, that was causing us a concern about what we were dealing with and what, how many we had of this and how many we had of that. And October of 2019, we came to you all to give you another update. That's when we started to coordinate with the school district to kind of give them a heads up if we know of a property's coming, because typically, they come and get the certificate of occupancy from us first, and then it's months before they actually get children into the house. So, ideally, they would like to know or have a little heads up. So, we said, as they start to come in, we'll forward those, that information to them if they meet that criteria. And then, just in December, city manager and some others, we met with DFAX and Residential Child Care Authority to learn their process, because that was the question, is where do we need to intervene, or where do we need to be notified? What do we need to be notified of? So, the biggest thing we found out was that if it was over six or more under juveniles, they are regulated by the state. So, DFAX is involved, the residential licenser is involved. So, now we know that if we're having issues in those larger type homes, we can go after those, and we know who to contact and who to get a hold of. The unfortunate side is they don't regulate six or less. So, therefore, if kids are getting put into those homes, it's not coming from DFAX. So, we're trying to find, we're still trying to chase that elusiveness to figure out who's putting children in those homes. So, that's why we're asking for the moratorium for those smaller units, so we can figure out what's going on. So, that's really what we're trying to do. And so, just kind of a graphic there, so personal care home types two will still be allowed, and group foster homes, which are above that, will still be allowed. The ones that are currently in operation will continue to be in operation, but we're just trying to figure out the process. We're trying to figure out where the kids are coming from, how can we intervene if we need to intervene, if there are problems in those homes, and we're notified by a citizen summary, who do we, who do we hand that off to? Who do we give that to? But right now, like I said, six or more, we've got a pretty good plan, we know who to contact, we can get with the school district, we can work it all out. But six or less, it's kind of all over the place. So, we're trying to, trying to figure that out. So...
Mr. Mayor, as Director Hutchinson and counsel, as he said, we met with the state officials in December. Well, we met with them twice.
Yes, sir.
But the second meeting was initiated actually by them, and they came to my office, and there were eight officials from the various state agencies out of Atlanta. They asked for a meeting with me. And they brought a list of, a provider list, and maybe the director can explain better, but what they shared with me was very concerning, and that's why I thought we need to ask for a moratorium. I know there's going to be some new federal law in October of this year, but they shared with me, with us, that 85% of homes are in Columbus. Eighty-five percent. They shared with me that there are none in Fulton, Gwinnett, and they named some other counties. And I'd already been told earlier by my wife, who happens to be a legislator, when we were talking about this, she says, other cities don't have problems. She said, they don't have problems in Savannah and these other places. And she says, Isaiah, she says, I think it's your laws, your ordinances. You know, you're too lax. You know, they have put laws in place and ordinances that, you know, they're migrating to Columbus, was her assessment. But they told us that they have consultants through word of mouth and, who are assisting others. And so, if I set up my shop, and I've got two or three houses or whatever, and I help you set up your shop, and we have a relationship, and I don't know how that all works, I don't know if it's a pyramid or what it is, but what alarmed me was 85%, you were there, of the homes, the state folk out of Atlanta told us, are in Columbus. And so, I have to ask the question, why? And we need to figure it out. And so, I said immediately, we need to do a moratorium until we can figure something out. And that's why this is on the agenda today. Mr. Mayor, I just want to share it.
Mr. Hutchinson, do you want to comment on any of the other numbers?
Well, if we go by, say, if we're just looking at the DFAX's numbers, Columbus has 26, Darty County has four, Cobb has eight, Gwinnett has one, Fulton has six, Augusta has two, Macon has four, Savannah has two, and DeKalb has 30. So, that number, this is, this is just the group foster homes. That's that, that's that six or more group.
So, but you were there when the state officials said to you and to me, 85% are in Columbus.
Yes, sir.
Counselor House?
Thank you, Mayor. We have a couple of questions. Actually, you answered one of them. This is type 2 homes, and you're talking about the 85% that is actually here. Do we have any idea how many type 1s? Because that's what we're talking about doing a moratorium on.
Well, that's what we're, that's what we're trying to contain, because what is, we have what's listed, and at the most, we have 33. That would be, minus that 26, would be about five or six that are not in that.
And the list they gave me, this list, that's 29.
Correct. That's correct. So, if we're, if we're going by the 26 that the state has, then they're showing about three or four that may be in that.
These are type 2?
Yes, sir. Those are only type 2, because that's the only ones they, that's the only ones they have a list on.
Okay. And type 1, we're, you're inventorying, I guess, those?
That's correct. And that's kind of why we're asking for the moratorium, so we don't have any more that we have to keep chasing after, we can focus on the ones we have, because the problem before is the certificate of occupancy was never split between adult and youth.
Right.
So, right now, we have to go out and investigate, find out our kids, and then we're asking, you know, whoever's responsible for the home, where are you getting these people from, period? Whether it's adults or children, where are they coming from? Because that's the part we don't know. And so, we're trying to fill in that, that blank.
Now, if we're concerned about the 85%, should the moratorium be on type 1 and type 2, until we figure out?
Well, type 2 is registered. Type 2...
I know, but if we're worried about why 85% of them are here, should we stop it all until we figure it out?
I'm sorry. But I was going to ask him, talk about the new law that she talked, something is going to happen in October.
They mentioned that the, some of the financial incentives for having a large group home, that federal funding is going to go away as of October 2020. So, a lot of those people, we feel, that are doing this aren't necessarily doing it, maybe not for the right reasons, they may be doing it for the monetary incentive, and if that monetary incentive goes away, I think that will start to shrink that. Even they mentioned, a lot of them that are in those group homes, they're trying to move them to a traditional foster home situation. So, they're not trying to have them just in a house and be monitored, but actually in a traditional foster home.
And I got the impression they are not renewing...
That's correct.
...because of what's going to happen in October on the type 2. And so, we need to deal with the type 1.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Counselor Davis?
Mr. City Manager, thank you so much for bringing this up today, and I think this council member, I mean, what you're saying is music to my ears, I think, as well as the council. At the end of the day, we value these children. We value these children, and we would just want to make sure that they're being taken care of. And so many times, they become a commodity, as was just stated, for monetary purposes, and that's just wrong. And it leads to more problems with these kids when they become a number. And that's our concern, is that these kids are being taken care of and they're supervised. If people want to reach out, that's a great thing. I'm thrilled and thank God that people have a heart, that they'll be willing to do this. Not easy work. It's not easy work taking care of these kids. They, they all have stories, they're all different, and a lot of times, they, they need help, and they don't need to be placed in situations where they become a commodity or a number. They've seen that way too many times. But I thank you, Mr. City Manager, for sharing what you did about talking to your wife and others. Some of the requests that we put on the legislative agenda deals with supervision, and I really hope that our state legislators take an interest in this. It deals with supervision, and what I just stated, some of those requests we've made helps out in that area. It provides security and safety mechanisms for these children, and it's a scary thing out there, especially, you know, we have any, a lot of the issues that we've talked about are dealing with young men, but when you cross over into the young women and the girls, it is far more scary than what you think. So, supervision is a key, and I really hope the state helps us. Like you said, we're taking steps to try to, you know, to understand this a little bit better and put up those, those walls of security. But the state needs to help us in making sure that the supervision is there also. Because you, look, it just, there's no way that anybody can keep an eye on what's going on 24/7 all the time. You have to sometimes trust people, but that doesn't, we realize that doesn't always work. So, I really hope that, Mr. Mayor, I know when, when you head up to Atlanta and the city manager and talking to your wife and others, that they would really value some of those things that we ask for, because that can really help and make a difference, not just here, but in the state. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. Okay, I'm trying to understand this. How are you finding the homes that are under, that are occupied by under six individuals?
Well, if they do what they're supposed to do, one of two ways. We either find out because somebody else in the neighborhood, we get a call from a citizen in the neighborhood saying that, you know, there's, there's just a whole bunch of kids in the neighborhood, and then we start to investigate that way. The other way, if they do come in and get a CO and do what they're supposed to do, then that's how we, we have a tab on them. Once we have that CO and we come in for the occupancy, because they are housing juveniles, fire department and fire prevention has to perform a check on that facility every year. So, between those two safeguards, we figure out where they are, but now, we're trying to figure out where the kids are coming from. That's kind of the new part of it, because typically, if I'm looking at it as a house or as a building official, when we look at it, there's no one in there. We're just approving it for that use, and we approve that, and then it could be six months, nine months, a year later, then the kids are being placed in the home. So, at that point, like I said, we've approved the certificate of occupancy for that use, but we don't see any kids. We don't see anybody. We don't, there's not a sign, you know, when they drop the kids off, where they're coming from. So, now, as we're going back to perform those yearly inspections, we're, that's what we mentioned that we were doing with fire prevention, to go back with them to say, hey, where are these kids coming from? Where are these, where is the source of these kids? So, therefore, we can figure out, if we have problems, at least we know who to contact, who to call. We don't have that right now. Right now, we have to kind of go with case by case. If somebody calls and they come from this organization, we go meet with that organization and say, hey, what's going on? Now, a lot of, we've had some ups and downs with that kind of situation, talking with that organization, trying to figure out, you should be doing this, or you should be doing this, and you need to be letting us know if you're operating a home. So, we found six or seven additional homes that they were placing adults, and we've been following that as well. So, we just kind of, you know, wait for, we wait for citizen complaints on one end, and then on our side, we're proactive, we're working with fire prevention as we go through the year to check those homes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Hutchinson, is, this is operating as a business.
That's correct.
Did you say there's a business license required?
Now, that's some of the part we've been trying to corral. A lot of them claim that they are nonprofit and that they are working for nonprofit, but we have told them, and we continue to tell them, that if you are receiving any monetary benefit, you at least have to come get a CO from us. Now, if you do not have a bona fide declaration from the IRS that you are a nonprofit, you are operating a business. So, therefore, you are required to get a business license and to come into compliance. So, that's where we're going back through these companies to confirm, because they do come to us and get a CO. Some of them do, some of them don't. Or some of them say they're working under a blanket company, and that's not how that works either, because the blanket company has a, a business license at that location, but just, you know, if a McDonald's opened up, any new additional business at additional locations requires an additional business license. So, if you're under this blanket company, but you, you've got six or seven personal care homes all over the city, each one of those locations has to be licensed. So, we're going, like I said, we're going back after that, because we find out one, then typically, they have two or three. And so, we're, we're just kind of, like I said, that's why we prefer to just have a moratorium, so we can continue to search out and root them out, as opposed to, oh, here comes four more, here comes five more, and then now we're having to chase those new ones as well. So...
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Thomas?
Mr. Hutchinson, when you say you're trying to find out where they're coming from, do you mean if they're coming from Darty County, or do you mean if they're coming from the Department of Justice?
Yeah, the, the placing organization. So, whether it's DFAX, if it's DJJ, if it's some other organization, we need, we're trying to figure out where, where those people are coming from, or where those juveniles are coming from.
Which organization?
That's correct. Yes, yes, ma'am.
And when the city manager, excuse me, read that list of places that have the numbers, are there other, I mean, are we having people come from other places that don't have these homes? Other places in Georgia?
Well, the kind of, when we talk to DFAX, when we talk to them, ideally, that, you know, they're just happy to have places to place the children, period. So, a lot of times, you know, if they can place them wherever, they don't necessarily tell us the counties. And like I said, from my point of view, I'm necessarily not concerned about where they're coming from. I'm just trying to make sure where they're placed, and they're not causing a nuisance in the neighborhood, we're not having problems like that. So, we hadn't gotten to that point, but that's just because we're just not getting to the organizations that are placing them, so it's making that step.
But I can say, from the first meeting we had over at the school district, there was an indication they're coming from other counties.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Because the school district, when we heard their concerns, and we had both city staff and school district staff there, when I heard their horror stories, I wanted our people to just sit down and stop talking and let them have all of the time, because they were explaining situations where they may have a student to come in in February, and they brought no grades and all of these situations with them, and you've already missed more days of schools than allowed, and they're caught with, what can we do with this kid you just put in our school? And so, they were coming in from other jurisdictions, and now they show up at the school district to start school in February or March, and they haven't been to a school, they have no records, and just, when we heard their stories, I'm like, just let them talk to the state people, because we, we don't really have a problem compared to what the school district has with these kids coming in from other jurisdictions. So, to answer your question, I think the answer is yes, they're coming from some other jurisdictions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Thompson?
My question is, are we aware of any homes that are here in Columbus that are not licensed by the state, and what do we do if we are aware with those facilities?
Well, I'm leaning on what DFAX told us, that they, below... Well, I'm leaning on what DFACS told us, that they, below six, they do not license or register. So therefore, there is not a count. So if they do have children that are in a home that is less than six, then A, you know that it's not licensed by the state through that facility, but they may be licensed through other organizations, DJJ, other groups. That doesn't mean they're illegal.
Okay.
But they just, just under the DFACS rules, they're not meeting those criteria. And like I said, we're just trying to learn all the criteria. So if we need to enact something here locally that counters that or mirrors what they're doing, then we know. Because, like I said, DFACS has on their website, where you can go in and click in, and you can find all the homes in the state. And so you can search by county, zip code, anything. So I was like, great. So that's where we started, because our apples to apples, we were trying to do an apples to apples comparison, because what we call a personal care home, or what we may call a foster care home here, may not be what they call it in different counties and different jurisdictions. So that's where those numbers came from, because I took those from the state and I compared us to everyone else.
Okay.
So that's, that's the part of this, is trying to find out, what is the definition for illegal?
Illegal, okay.
Now, if they're housing one or two children, you know, and they come in and get a CO for a foster care home, they're doing what they're supposed to do, and they're meeting all the requirements. But there may be others that are housing them and don't have the CO. Now, that part, because it may be only one child or maybe two, it's going to be a lot harder for us to make that case, that this person is there illegally, or this is operating as.
So if it's under six, are they receiving funding?
That's the part, we don't know. That's the part we're trying to figure out. I would assume so, but we don't know. We don't know that placing organization, like I was talking with Counselor Thomas. We don't know all the organizations that are placing children. So once we find out all of those and have meetings with them, then we can find out, how are they getting there? Because it's happening. We're finding them, we're getting calls. So they exist, but trying to find out the root of the cause is what's what we're trying to do.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Davis?
And I wanted to highlight on that for a moment, legit or not, these are businesses, and there's a lot of money moving around in many different directions. It really concerns me. But, you know, to talk about, you've really got several categories here. And for the sake, Mayor, if I may educate the public, the general public on this, and they'll be watching this, there are several categories here that we're talking about. And I have every reason to believe that they're flying under the radar. And even if they have a license, here's the problem, even if they have a license from the state, they're not abiding by our local ordinances and codes, whether it's life safety matters, whether it's a CO, whether it's they're doing this stuff, they're not. So that's a violation of their license, and they're not reporting it to the state. Somehow, there's a breakdown in communication in all this. But you've got, we're talking about two homes today, personal care homes and foster homes. We just changed the definitions, okay? Personal care homes, for those watching, are seniors that need assistance. And they're out there. Now, they, and this is key, this, because we all get the calls and concerns from people in our neighborhoods. I just recently got a number of calls from Brookstone. Counselor Thomas, your neighborhood. And people concerned, but they don't understand, they think the city controls all that.
Right.
We don't. We have no jurisdiction on personal care homes. That is allowed to happen anywhere in this city under the Federal Fair Housing Act. And I think there's, because somebody, I think there's a distance, isn't there a distance between the homes?
There used to be.
There's no distance between the homes?
Nope.
I thought at one time, there was a distance.
It was.
In some communities.
They still have.
They do have distance. We don't. That may be something we want to revisit, but anyway.
We've researched that, Counselor, extensively, and we can't put in a distance restriction because of the Fair Housing Act.
Well, I hear you, but I also.
You can regulate these life safety issues.
I hear what you're saying, but I just heard them say that some areas have it. So it's kind of contradictory, but if it's allowed, we need to research it until somebody tells us we can't do it. There are problems that, that exist there, possibly white collar crimes, things of that nature, because it's just not being, it's just not being supervised the way it should be. Now, the foster care homes are dealing with the children, and a small number. But, you know, we had a case that came here dealing with a home, and, you know, and we said, okay, you know, you can move forward, but yet, we, then we realized that it didn't meet the standards of our life safety issues. So, you know, those, there's a situation where we saw the danger there, and has been able to make the adjustments. Then you got therapeutic, and then you got transitional. And that's probably, this body's going to be dealing with that soon, because those are issues too. And a lot of that's flying under the radar screen. So, you know, it just, since I've been on this council, I used to, you know, I didn't even know about this, I didn't even think about it, but now it's starting to surface, and so it must be addressed. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Barnes?
Glenn, I'd like to thank you, because I think you were the, one of the first ones that sounded the alarm on this situation. And everyone knows of the situation. I went through, Isaiah, with the one that was in my district. And, you know, when you mentioned, I'm glad you identified the differences, Glenn. And these homes are dealing with the most vulnerable populations in any city or municipality, the very young or the very old. And I, and I do note, Mr. City Manager, before the state got involved, we did have a reign on the distances and things that, but when the state got involved, it took it completely out of our hands. And the problem that I see, Glenn, you identified it exactly, but that there's, they're cropping up, cropping up all over the place. And the first indication, there's something that's wrong, 85% here in Columbus. And so I'm really, I'm really glad that we have imposed a moratorium, and I'm really thankful also, John, that you brought up, you answered Charmaine's question. I'm thankful that citizens in this community contact us when something's awry and let us know. Because really, to be perfectly honest with you, we have no indication of these things cropping up. And I'd like to thank, I'd like to highlight also, Yvonne Ivey back there, because she checked out a person for me. So between you, your department, John, and Yvonne, I really give you guys kudos, because, but this is a problem because of the neglect, because the money's driving a lot of them, I won't say all of them. But they're dealing with the two most vulnerable populations, the very young and the very old in our community. And I, I'm glad that we have imposed a moratorium on this here, and that we need to be very vigilant now, because we're dealing with lives here. And so, Mr. City Manager, I thank you, I really thank you for having that meeting with the, with the individuals at the state, and that we are on top of what the state is doing.
Thanks, sir. Counselor Thomas?
Mr. Hutchinson, we have some of these homes in Columbus that have been in business for years and are doing the right thing. And it may be that because, that they may not have dotted every i and crossed every t, but as soon as they're told you have to do that, you have to take care of this business, they start doing what they need to do. My concern is, in those places that have been in business for a while, have been doing this for a number of years, have been doing the right thing by these kids, but because they haven't had a business license, for example, or whatever, what's going to happen to those kids in the meantime? Are those kids being put out? Are they allowed to continue to operate this home until they get all their ducks in a row? Or I'm just, I know that we have some people who are doing this purely for, you know, financial gain or whatever, but I do know too, that we have a lot of people in Columbus who are doing this because they want to make sure that the children are taken care of. And I want us to be sure, as we're doing this moratorium, I'm not sure exactly what that's going to mean to those folks who are already in business.
Well, the moratorium's specifically on new. So the ones that are in place right now, we continue to monitor them like we do anything else. When their business license is due, and they have to come check their business license, they have to pay their fees, they do that information. Honestly, on the building side, once they get a CO, I don't see them again, unless they make an addition to the property or they change the use of the property. So they wouldn't be in any violation of me or any building codes unless they make an addition, or unless they purchase a new facility. But then, that's, that's where the moratorium comes in, to prevent them creating new facilities that fall under personal care home type one. The existing properties, we work with a lot of them, we have a few in the audience today that we've worked with, we have no problems with, so it's not going to affect them in their daily operations. Like I said, we're just trying to figure out where they're coming from. The ones that are already in business, we already know of them. We know them, we work with them, they come in and they do what they need to do. It's the concern of the ones trying to continue to inventory what we have, so we can better discern and give you that information, but to also make sure that the new ones aren't coming in until we get it right. So the ones that are in operation, they will continue to operate, we will not stop anybody, we won't put anybody out, it doesn't, it doesn't get to that level. It's just trying to make sure, trying to better inventory what we do have. So no, no, no place will be closed, no, anything like that. We're just preventing any new ones from applying.
Okay. I just want us to be sure that we've got these children particularly, and adults who need the personal care, taken care of.
That's correct.
And that they're not shipped off somewhere else or, you know, whatever. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Again, that's new applications only on this moratorium. There are no other questions. We'll bring that back then, Mayor. We can ask, anybody in the audience want to be heard on this subject? Okay, come on up, sir. Give them your name and address, please, sir.
My name is Victor Purnell. I live at 5869 Riverburg Drive in Columbus, Georgia. I am, I run Change the Lives S and P Incorporated in Columbus, Georgia. And I'm one of those companies that do do what I'm supposed to do. Mr. Allen, I've invited him out to my home. I don't know, I spoke to you, Mr. Davis, I've invited you, Ms. Thomas, I've invited you. I spoke to Ms. Crabbe about, about my homes. Mr. Allen has actually been to my home, walked through my home, sees how I conduct business. Now, just because a select few homes are making a bad name for other homes, I don't think that it should have to come back on me. Now, with that said, the Family First Act is coming out, and that's what you're talking about. So some homes are not going to be able to survive the Family First Act. So if it's 85% homes in Columbus, you can cut that in half, because with what you put forward in legislation, you said that you wanted homes to be accredited, you wanted homes to have watchful oversight, and the ones that are doing the right thing are the ones that's doing that. I am an accredited agency through CARF accreditation. I have been for the last year and a half. I'm up for my reaccreditation now. So what you put forward in legislation, that was a good thing, but the people that are not getting these accreditations, who are not doing the right thing, are going to be shut down. I mean, that's, that's a given. Now, one thing I do want to bring to council attention is, we have a lot of foster care kids in Columbus also. Majority of those kids that go to group homes are not in Columbus. They're going to other counties. For instance, say your DJJ kids, your Department of Juvenile Justice kids, they cannot, the ones that get in trouble in our county that are our youth, not group home youth, our youth, they cannot be housed in Columbus, Georgia. We all know that, right?
State lines.
They, because they probably will reoffend in their own community. So they're trying to put them outside of the community and trying to put them back in the neighborhood, to acclimate them to the neighborhood before they bring them, transition them back into Columbus, Georgia. So, yes, yes, sir. So, I mean, if, like I was talking to Mr. Hutchinson, he's a real good guy, very admirable, I appreciate him a lot, because I've been communicating with him, and I've been giving him contacts if he needs those. Like Mr. Allen called me one day and asked me, who's the person for RCCL? I gave him the information. This information is not a secret. If you want it, all you have to do is ask for it. Because at the same time, I, and I know what you said, that some people are in it for the money. With these homes, you have to be audited. You have to have a CPA. You have to have, enter to our audit every single year. So you have to account for the funds that are spent and that are, that leaves out of your facility. You can't just go spend this money on anything and everything that you want to. Don't, don't get me wrong, there might be some that are, but I know I'm not one of those. So Taylor CPA is one of my auditors. So I don't know if any of y'all know them. So you have, it's things that you have to do by law, and if you're not, you're going to have to account for it through the state.
How many homes do you own in Columbus?
I own, I own two homes in Columbus.
How many overall? Do you go outside the county? I'm just curious.
No, sir, I don't go outside the county. I only, I only do foster and DJ, and I do do DJJ youth.
And, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to come in and thank you, Changing Lives. By the mere fact that you're here and you came up and you've, you've been open and transparent, I mean, it tells me you're doing the right thing.
Yes, sir.
And so I just, I wanted to thank you first, but then I wanted to chime in on a comment, because we were asked earlier about Counselor Thomas, if people are coming in from out of county, and I gave the example with the school district. And what I heard in that meeting, when we went with the school district, that they're coming in from out of county, and they have criminal records, and they're juveniles, and so they show up at school in February or March, and they don't have school records, and they don't know their history, because they're juveniles, they don't get the history. And so now you just take them in your school, and you don't know what this kid did in the, or, you know, what he or she did in the other county, and now you're, you're having to take them into your school, and it just, it, when you said that they don't keep them in that same county, so that explains why I heard what I heard when I was at that initial meeting about them coming in from other counties with criminal records perhaps, but they're juveniles, and you don't know their records, and then they show up February or March with no transcript. What do I do with them?
Now, now, majority of DFACS kids are, I won't say the problem, but DJ, DFACS kids jump from place to place to place to place to place. Depends on how their, how their behaviors are. And that's something that we're trying to stop as far as stability-wise. Now, with that said, it's a law. You have 72 hours before you, by the time you have to enroll a kid into the school district. If you don't, you are violating the law. So now, some kids might not come with something, but usually, you can work with the school district, let them know, hey, we, we're trying to get these other records, they're not coming in time, and some of these kids have been to certain different schools. So, so that is, that is, that's a legitimate issue, but at the same time, majority of the foster kids are the ones who don't come with anything. Now, your DJJ youth, they come with a majority of everything, due to the fact that they have to go to school while they're in the Department of Juvenile Justice. So they have a transcript. Your foster youth are the ones that's hard to get the transcripts for. So, so that's one of the problems. But I wanted to share this with you, Mr. Davis. Five years ago, I lost two sisters. One of them had two boys, one of them had a girl. If I wasn't, if my, if I didn't have the family backbone that I have and the caring heart that I have, they'd probably be in one of these homes. I took the time out, I have five kids in my home, five kids that I'm raising, and three of them are my sisters. And it's hard. And I am giving back as much as I can, not to just, I'm also giving back in my community. I coach Little League sports. I'm over the Umpire Association for the State of Georgia in Dixie Youth. So I'm in my community, and I'm doing what I'm supposed to do. I mean, I don't know what more can I do in my community to help out these young men. And majority of them are troubled young men, come from backgrounds that's unbelievable, poverty stricken, I mean, you name it, they have seen it or been through it. So if I can help, and one thing I do do, I take Columbus kids first. DFACS kids from Columbus, those are my main priority. But sometimes, those kids have to leave out the community, because some of them run away, some of them do this, some of them do that. So it's, it's, it's a, it's a problem within, it's a generational problem also.
Counselor Davis?
No, Mr. Purnell, I thank you for coming, and I think you and I, we know where our heart is, okay? Our heart's in the right place. And I don't know if you know my background, but I've been dealing with foster children for over 35 years. My wife and I founded a ministry here in Columbus, Georgia, that is expanding and still operating today. So I, I understand these children, and I know what they deal with. That's one of my concerns. But there are good people out there, and I've said that over and over, we're not dealing with that. We're dealing with the matters that are flying under the radar and all. all. And, and one of the things I wanted to share with you, you mentioned it, what you're talking about is not allowed in neighborhoods in Columbus, Georgia. What you're talking about falls under transitional housing, and our codes and our zoning is very specific on that. So, when these children in foster care are in neighborhoods, they have to meet the requirement, they have to meet our regulations, the city regulations, and that's what we're saying. We don't always know that, but we're now, we just started finding this out, because it's just been kind of a hidden thing for such a long time. But a lot of kids have suffered because people are not doing the right thing, and they have other motives. So, that's something that we have to understand as well. You guys are doing the right, there are several, I, I mean, I can go down a list of people I know that are making a difference. And God knows, it's, it's not an easy world out there for these children. It, it really not, and the numbers keep increasing. I don't know what we're going to do with it, but that's a societal issue, it's a crisis, big crisis for the state of Georgia. The state of Georgia has a big crisis in this area, people don't realize that. But I hope that the decision-makers are doing the right thing. But my care is just that these kids are being supervised, they just want somebody to love them, care for them, provide their needs, get on their feet, and they'll make it. They don't want to be taken advantage of, and that's what we're dealing with.
So, are you saying my homes are, I'm doing the right thing?
You and I had a conversation.
Yes, sir.
And, and that's my understanding. I don't, I, I think you're doing everything right.
Okay.
I think you're doing everything right.
I have, I go every year, get my license renewed, I mean, I do everything.
Exactly. I think you're standing up and speaking for those that are doing the right thing, and, and, and the heart is in the right place. That's what I said. I believe your heart's in the right place.
And, and one thing I want to say, if, if you need any information, reach out. I mean, I, I would sit down with you and, and talk, and let's figure it out, and let's, let's find other solutions. Because one thing I have learned, if I have an issue with a kid in the neighborhood, and the neighbor, all my neighbors have my phone numbers, if they call me, that kid is gone within seventy-two hours, he's a nuisance to the neighborhood. You have options to try to relieve that, that person from, from having to deal with those issues.
And when you and I talked, I think you're in a hundred percent support of what we're trying to ask the state legislation, right?
Oh, yes, because it's already going to fall in law, it's already in law by the federal government.
And ask you if you understand that.
Yes, sir.
That's the right thing to do.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. Let me just, let me go one step further with what Mr. Purnell shared with us. When we first started talking about this last year, I guess, he reached out to me. He called me and invited me to come to his office and to come and tour one of his homes. And going into his office, he has a classroom set up where he trains everybody that has contact with those children. And it, it, I was impressed. And then we drive out to one of his homes, and it, it is spotless. And it's well, the yard's well taken care of, it, it's, it's a credit to the neighborhood that it's located in. I mean, if there's a model out there that they should go by, Mr. Purnell's got it. He, he knows all the background and knows who to contact, and, and he offered to be a resource to the city, and, and I admire him for that. And I appreciate you coming today and, and being here to talk to us and share your story with us.
I appreciate you taking my phone call, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Mr. Purnell, I've got just two quick comments. One is, you know, unfortunately, most, if not all, of legislation is written for the folks looking for loopholes to try to benefit without providing any kind of benefit to anybody else. So, if you're doing everything right, I, I really don't think that you're going to be impacted by anything that this council does. And the second thing I'd mention, I appreciate the offer for us to reach out to you, but I would encourage you to continue to do what you're doing, and let's reach out to our folks. You know what these issues are, you know them better than we do. So, if you can tell us what to be on the lookout for, for some of these people that are operating on the fringes, that's going to ensure that the people that are doing it the right way, you and others, can continue to try to make a difference in the lives of these boys. I know I, I went to the, I've been on two occasions to the Kenneth Walker Youth Home and heard testimonies from, from, from some of these children. Man, it broke my heart. I mean, I don't know how in the world, it takes a special person to recover from some of the trauma they've been put through. And homes like that one, and homes that sounds like yours, are frankly, one of the only avenues they have to try to become reclaimed back into society. So, we're not looking to shut the ones down that are doing it right.
Yes, sir.
So, thank you for your, for your presence here today, and continue to reach out and provide assistance to the...
If you ever get any complaints about my homes, please reach out to me, so I can help solve that complaint. Because I'm going to act hastily, I mean, I'm going to be on it. But thank y'all, y'all have a blessed day.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else want to comment?
I'm on the public agenda on a different subject, but do people realize how shocking this is? That eighty-five percent of these homes, and it's like twenty-six homes, you make a business out of children in trouble? Shame on us. Shame on us, because the fundamental problem is children who are living in poverty. I shared with a number of you a paper by the Annie E. Casey Foundation, children living in high poverty, low opportunity areas. That's talking about Columbus, Georgia, and all that stuff around Cusida Road, because it is not disconnected from the crimes and the murders and the rapes and the robberies. It's pretty phony to be talking about caring about children when you would not understand what it means to have twenty-six of these homes in this single community. And I think it requires a little bit more investigation. You know, I love using the open records request, and I'm going to put in one, who are these twenty-six homes? I think it's outrageous, and it's really, really phony if you're not dealing with the root cause of the problem, which is children in trouble. And it's a lot of children in trouble in this community, as we know.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, anybody else want to be heard before we close out this hearing? All right, we'll bring that back then for a vote in two weeks, Mayor. Got a couple more resolutions on the agenda. First one is a resolution to approve refinancing of bonds by the Public Finance Authority out of Wisconsin. This is where they've made improvements at Brookside Glen. Mr. Jim Elliott is here from Butler Snow. Several of us have known Mr. Elliott many years as city attorney over in Warner, Warner Robbins, but you want to say anything, Jim, before they take a vote?
Very briefly, Mayor Henderson and members of council, thank you very much for letting me appear before you. I'm with the Macon Office of Butler Snow. Our law firm is involved with a refinancing, if you will, transaction involving a senior living facility on Bradley Park Drive in your city. It's kind of an idiosyncrasy, if you will, of the Internal Revenue Code that requires public approval of a bond issue. Let me just emphasize, as does the resolution, that does commit the city to any financial obligation whatsoever under the bonds, and so we're just here seeking approval of the resolution.
Counselor Davis?
And Mr. Elliott, I do have some questions on this. And last time that a request like this came through, I had some concerns, and, and, and let me just give you an example why. I think in our community, the Ralston, I think a lot of folks here understand the story. I don't know if you do, but they understand the story. They asked for bonds as well. The owners cashed out, they didn't make the improvements, they moved on. My concern is this is something that's come in, I guess, out of the state of Wisconsin, but they float around like this in their bonds, and I'm, I'm assuming they're tax-free, I don't know, maybe on both sides.
They are.
But I don't know the, I don't know the requirements, I don't know the, I've, I've got a, I think this is the second time this one property is already asked. There's one up the other road that's asked. I know this property is, is, there's been a sale on this property not long ago. I know what the property's valued. I, I just can't make it all add up, and it just makes me a little uncomfortable. Now, if you've got more information, that would really help out, but I don't have any information, and I don't see any, I don't have a budget, I don't know what the money's being requested for and how it's going to be used. I don't know who gets what. It just, you know, I asked the question, why don't they just go through trend, or just conventional financing? That concerns me, and it's easy for somebody from out of town to come here and ask this body. I don't know if this body really understands what's being asked, but to ask, evidently, we're part of a process, all we got to do is put a stamp on it, but I'm not so sure that I want to put my stamp on it, because I don't know what's happening on the other end.
Certainly, I understand. My understanding of the transaction, Councilman, is that this is a refunding, or refunding, which is basically a refinance of the previously issued bond issue that you referred to a moment ago. It's owned by two LLCs out of the state of South Carolina, and the financing, you're right, is, and it struck me as a little odd that the financing's done through a Wisconsin public authority created by the Wisconsin statutes. I know the total amount of the refunding is six point three three five million dollars, and that just, again, it's a refunding in the sense of that the interest rates are better now, and so that's what the, that's what the property owners are seeking, is to refund their, refinance their bond issue at a better interest rate.
You know what the property's valued?
I don't know that, I'm sorry.
You know how much the property sold for?
I do not.
But you do know how much you're asking for.
Well, again, I know that, I know that the, and our firm is the underwriters counsel, Parker Poe out of Charlotte is the...
I understand, I know y'all are, you know, you, you've got to do the asking, you're doing the work for them. Understand that. And I don't even know what line item or what year, or what, as far as where that plays into the bond issue, but I, I just don't have enough information. This council can go in and prove it, but I'm not, I'm uncomfortable. I would ask for a delay, though, if this council sees that it's necessary. If I had more information, and I'm going to start asking that, any bond request that comes like this, we get very few of them, but I'm telling you, the last one, I know it didn't play out right.
I appreciate it.
And, you know, everybody knows that story around this table, everybody knows that story in the audience, it's in the paper almost every week. So, I, I am concerned about that, and, and I don't know on this property what, I mean, I think it only has, what, thirty, thirty-five rooms?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four rooms.
That's my understanding.
Is that even twenty-four rooms?
I'm sorry?
For, for the request?
Then, that's why, that's the information I was given, is twenty-four rooms.
You say why I'm uncomfortable?
Well, again, the Ralston, as we know, was a development authority issue way back when, but, you know, this is a private entity that's gone through this authority in Wisconsin, and we approved the original bond issue just because it's part of the process, and I assume the improvement, improvements have been made, and this is just...
There's been no improvements, Mr. Attorney?
None?
None. Neither nor the other subject entity that came and requested.
The Ralston you're talking about?
Well, I'm, no, I'm talking about, there was another one further up the road from Brookstone Glen that also asked for bonds, same...
Yeah.
Same setup evidently. I, I don't, like I said, I don't know how they do things in Wisconsin.
You're pretty good with football.
Well, you're right about that.
Is that all, Mr. Davis?
That's it.
Counselor Crabbe?
Okay, I, I need to kind of get my head around this.
Yes, ma'am.
Is it a, is it a new company taking over this property?
Well, they formed new LLCs, and so I think there is a transfer of ownership, and at the ti, and in conjunction with the transfer of ownership is going to be this refunding of the outstanding bond issue, again, at a better interest rate. And that's, that's simply the purpose of the request.
Yeah, is there any way that we can get some kind of information about this new company? I mean, we're, we're familiar with the old company, because they've been here for a while, but we know nothing about this new company. And he, Mr. Davis brings up a, a good point. I mean, is there any way we can vet it? I mean, so that we know that we're not making a mistake, like we, like has been done in the past?
I'll be happy to get that information to you.
Then maybe we should just delay this, and so that, so that we can get some more information on this new company. I make that motion, if, if this is the appropriate time to do that.
And just for information purposes, we need to, probably should ask if there's any impact on, on, on y'all with, with enacting a delay.
I'm sure closing is scheduled for the next couple of weeks. I think Ms. Sheftall and, and maybe Mr. Fabe in negotiations with some of these folks as well. But again, this approval is required by the Internal Revenue Code, so if it's, you know, you can't, the closing won't take place until that's done.
Yeah, and they've had a hearing on January sixth, a public hearing was held, that had to be noticed through the ledger inquiry, so it's not like this is the first time anybody's heard of it, but it's a pleasure of council if you want to delay it to get some more info.
There's a motion to delay, Counselor Davis?
I'll make a motion to delay, but, you know, I'm, I'm wondering how many people read that notice in the paper, but is there any, outside the soft call, is there any guarantee that you can give? You got any document that shows us actually what the funds is going to be used on?
I don't have them here today, but I can certainly get, I can get those documents.
I mean, I just need to see that, that the money's going to be used appropriately. That's, that's...
Sir, I'm sure.
You understand my concern, right?
I do understand that, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, there is, there's actually two motions, so I assume that's a motion, and the second to delay. All right, for, for how long?
If he, if he can get us the information via our nets, maybe, I don't, we should be able to be, make that...
How long do you think it'd take to get that information to council, sir?
A couple of days.
Okay, well...
I can do that very quickly.
It could be distributed to us through the attorney's office, correct?
Sure, we can send you an email with everything attached that we get.
Right, so, just for the next meeting, as long as the information has, has come to us.
Okay, so the motion's to delay until the meeting on January twenty-eighth. Okay, and there is a second. Is there any other discussion? All right, all is in favor, please say aye. Are there any opposed? All right, it'll be delayed till the next meeting, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Elliott, if you'll get that info to our office, we will get it distributed. Thank you. We'll bring that back then in two weeks. Last item, Mayor, is the qualifying fees for county offices to be filled in the 2020 elections. These fees represent three percent of the salaries of all of these offices. We do this every couple of years when there's going to be a primary and general election. It's ready for adoption.
Motion second to approve the qualifying fees for county officers, any discussion? All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And at least one counselor has asked that we remind the public who may not know and may not care, but, but the qualifying fees are set, it's a formative that's set by the state. All we do is the calculations, and it's a percentage of the income that is derived from serving in those different offices. So, it's a lot less to qualify for a council member, simply because as part-time legislators, the pay's not too great. I know y'all think they make a ton of money, but I promise you that's not true. And that's why you'll see a, a different amount for people who are qualifying to run for some of the clerks' offices, or sheriff, or marshal, or anything like that. All right?
We, with that approval then, Mayor, all we need is an executive session, hopefully pretty short on litigation and real estate acquisition.
Okay.
That's it.
All right. We'll move into the public agenda, and I want to remind the folks that are appearing on public agenda that you'll have five minutes to make your comments. And at the end of five minutes, you'll have to take a seat. We've got a lengthy public agenda today, and if, if, if a counselor has a specific direct question to ask you about what you're, you're presenting, you can stay and respond to that question, but no more, no more comments. All right, first is Ms. Pat Frey, Representative Muscogee Russell, Continuum of Care regarding the point in time.
Easy for you to say, right?
Ma'am?
Easy for you to say, right?
Not today.
Hi, good morning.
Welcome, Pat.
And actually, I was, I was glad things were still...
And actually, I was, I was glad things were still going along with City Attorney's Agenda because I had a board meeting, and I was raving here. Sorry, Chief, but, but everything's good. Again, next week, we have our annual Point in Time Count, and just for those of you who are not aware of what that is, the Point in Time Count is a federally mandated assessment of homelessness in a community, and we say Point in Time Count because that's what, the, the name that HUD gave it, but it's not simply counting. We are interviewing and assessing the needs of those who are in a shelter, in, on the streets, or along the Riverwalk, or those kinds of places, or in places not meant for human habitation, cars, abandoned buildings, and those kinds of things. That, that's the three categories that we're assessing on the Point in Time Count. Now, we have people who are precariously housed, people who are doubled up, and those things, according to the federal definition of those who are literally homeless, that does not qualify. So on next Tuesday evening, from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM, we'll be in our shelters across the city, interviewing and assessing needs of the individuals and families that are in those shelters. The following morning at 5:30, we will meet at the United Way office, and we'll get together with our escorts from local law enforcement on both sides of the river, and then we will head out to the streets, under the bridges, and in all of those sundry places across Muskogee and, I'm sorry, Muskogee and Russell County to assess the needs of individuals and/or families that are, that are, that are unsheltered. We hope to have preliminary numbers to everyone by 4:00 on next Wednesday, the 22nd. We're really tickled with the software that we, we use. We can assess needs. We can do referrals right away, but also then we can get some real numbers to everyone, and then we can assess what the gaps on services are in our community. It's not enough just to gather the information if we don't do anything with it. For several years, we saw an increase in families experiencing homelessness, meaning families with minor children, and one of our emergency shelters then took that information and changed their model so that they could meet the changing needs of our community. So again, it's next Tuesday and Wednesday. I'll be glad to, to, to resend out an invitation to all city officials to, to join us. If you wanted to come and observe or whatever, we'd be glad to have you.
Thank you, Pat. Are there any, any questions of counsel? We appreciate what you do and, and what everybody does involved in the continuum of care. It is critically important in our community to try to, try to continue to, to address the issue of those that are, are unsheltered, so thank you.
Thanks, sir.
All right, Mr. Roy Cook, representing Cook's Place.
I have a handout if I can.
Sure, if you want to give it to the clerk, she'll distribute it for you.
I can?
Yeah, yeah. Baker Memorial, I'm sure. And I was gonna introduce you as a bum, but I didn't think people would understand. I'm married to a bum, so that's, that's legal for me to say.
That's good.
Baker High School.
Thank y'all for letting me come. I'm sure I'm at the right place for this, but I spoke with Ms. Thomas before the meeting, and I said, do you know what the airport is located, what street is located on? She goes, Airport Throughway. I said, no, it's West Brit David. And go a little further down, and you can see that it changes name to Miller Road, which is kinda stupid to me because Miller Road, I'm on the corner of Moon in Miller. Let's say I'm at the Circle K, right by Windsor Park Shopping Center. I call the police, can you help me? I'm getting robbed. Where are you? I'm at the Circle K on Miller Road. They're gonna go to the one on Miller, and Milgen, I'm sure, because that one section has been Miller Road now for, since 1968 when they extended the runway. But not only does it change, it also changes to Moon. So from Airport Throughway, West Brit David, then it goes to Miller Road, and then it goes to Moon Road, as you can see on my, hopefully. I've got a, a bigger map here if that helps. But I think that it would behoove us to, to change it from airport, or keep Airport Throughway from there to the corner of Miller Road. I come in, the Windsor Park Shopping Center is listed as Miller Road, and Arnold's bikes just moved from Warm Springs Road to there, and he said he has calls all the time that people are on Miller Road trying to find him, and he is on the other Miller Road. To me, it, it makes sense to change. I don't know if Mr. Jones is the one that, I know we changed 45th Street to Manchester Expressway, and to me, this makes more sense.
Well, I appreciate your comments, and, and what we'll do, Mr. Cook, is we'll pass this on to engineering, and we'll get the input of our public safety folks as well. And, and we've done this before. You know, the one thing that we have to continue to be aware of is the, is the financial impact of people that currently are using the address of one of the roads would be kinda.
Yeah, the, the six people that I spoke with, all of them are in favor of, so as far as stationary and stuff, that, they said that, that wouldn't be a problem. The only other ones that would be impacted would be, there's 20 houses that are listed as West Brit David, and they may have to change their address.
But we, but we will turn it over and ask them to look at it and give a report to counsel, but I appreciate you bringing it up. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Thomas?
I'm not sure exactly who could answer this. Who, do we have the authority? I know that there's some streets in town that we don't have the authority to change because they're state roads or whatever. Is this one of, is this one of ours that we could do this if we, if we wanted to?
And, and that was kinda the intent, I think, in passing. You'll hit your.
Mayor, I'll, I'll have to, to check. I don't know if that's a state road. I, I, it's not a state road, so we would have the authority.
We would have the authority to do.
Yes.
Okay.
Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. I've run into this problem looking for something on Miller Road, not realizing that that was Miller Road right there, so I, I'm glad that you came and brought this up. Thank you.
Counselor Davis? Okay. All right, yeah, we'll get the report back, Mr. Cook, and we'll see that you, you get notified of it. Thank you, sir. All right, next is Mr. David Helmick, representing Mr. Joseph Phillips. Sir, if you would go to the podium, please, and, and you can use this one if you've got something that you wanna show.
That's okay with counsel?
Sure, and you'd need to state your name and your address, if you don't mind, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm David Helmick, 111 12th Street, Columbus, Georgia. That's my law office. I represent Mr. Joseph Phillips, who's here with me. Document on passing Mr. Fabe, first of all, but show to counsel. This is an appeal of a non-renewal of Mr. Phillips' liquor license at 1244 Broadway, which is the Aiden Lounge and Restaurant. We're asking the counsel to renew, to allow for the renewal of his license at that establishment. The Aiden Lounge is, is an upscale, it's been in operation for a little over a year, and it was designed as an upscale, kind of laid-back. Thank you, ma'am. Laid-back establishment where, where adults could go for, for, for kind of a chilled-out environment and experience, for lack of a better term. Mr. Phillips and his group in the building out of this establishment spent north of $500,000, investing in the property, investing in our downtown growth to get it up and running. In fact, I think the, the figure is about $650,000 to outfit this establishment and make it right, and, and I think if any of members of counsel have seen, it's a beautiful area, and, and it is a benefit to downtown, and it has been doing great. So, all that said, it was quite a shock to Mr. Phillips when he went to renew his liquor license on Friday, December 27th of last year, and learned that he could not renew his license according to the Finance Department because he had two ordinance issues or convictions in the past year, which were both for ABC card issues. So he had no notice at all. He was told that, this was on December 27th, he was told that effective midnight on December 31st, he would lose his liquor license, which of course, as many of you know, is tantamount to having to shut down the business because, you know, it's about half or so of the revenue that we're talking about, and indeed, Aiden has had to shut down since that time, which leaves us here today. It was a shock to Mr. Aiden, pardon me, to Mr. Phillips and everyone that works there. So what, what we're asking the counsel is, is to allow for the renewal of this license for two different reasons, each of which are good in and of themselves. Okay, the first reason is this ordinance conviction involving Mr. Phillips. I'm gonna try and get it up there. If, if the counsel can see the document I put up, maybe I need to do something to get you to see it. So, Mr. Phillips had two ordinance charges in Recorder's Court. They were not involving his use of alcohol or dealing with alcohol in any form or fashion. They involved individuals at the Aiden Lounge who didn't have their proper ABC card, so Mr. Phillips was charged as a result of that, not as a result of anything Mr. Phillips did himself. I'm here to talk about the second one, which occurred in October of 2019. Mr. Phillips went to Recorder's Court. He spoke his case. He ended up being, being convicted of the ordinance and paid his fine of about $500. He had no idea at the time that that would cause the non-renewal, according to the Finance Department, of his liquor license. Absolutely no idea. He was uncounseled at the time. Certainly, if I was counsel for him, I think we would've had a different conversation, a different outcome. But that case came across, and that is what we are basing this on. I have appealed, what, what counsel sees before is, I have appealed that case, and this is a document I got yesterday afternoon from Recorder's Court. You'll see under case continued, it says case reopened. The funds are being refunded to Mr. Phillips, and it is going on appeal to state court, which is tantamount to, to a, a new case starting all over again. So our point, the first point why counsel should renew his license is that the second conviction, if you wanna call it that, is no longer valid due to this appeal to state court. You'll see, $500 OR bond is the outcome and disposition of this matter under a not guilty plea to state court, okay? That is the first reason why the license should be renewed, and it's frankly, the, I'd submit the simplest reason. The second one, which I'll get to, is the more kind of lawily legal type reason, which is that the Finance Department read the ordinance in question to.
Mr. Helmick?
Yes, absolutely.
Please forgive me for interrupting, but our rules are that you can have five minutes to.
Yes.
Address counsel.
Yes.
And if you're unable to complete, and I, I take it from the second, the noting a second reason, you, you weren't finished, you do have the right to come back at the end of counsel for an additional three minutes, but as of right now, I'm gonna have to ask you to take your seat unless there's any questions from Ms. Ivy or from any of the counselors with regard to the, to the licensing. I apologize. This is.
Sure.
Very, very heavy. We've got a very, very heavy kev. We do have two counselors queued up. Counselor Crabbe?
Oh, I'm sorry. Um.
Okay. Counselor Huff?
Let's go back. You said there are two?
Yes, sir.
Issues?
Yes, sir, absolutely. The second being, being that the ordinance that, that effectively disqualified the renewal doesn't, it just does not apply to Mr. Phillips and his case.
Okay, so on the, when you went to state court?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you're saying that money will give, that was closed? Money was refunded?
It, it is still pending.
It's pending.
In state court, still, still, still going on, but the money is being refunded, yes, Counselor Huff, to Mr. Phillips. Yes, sir.
Okay, okay.
And, and, I, I understand.
Yes, sir, I'm gonna have, yes, sir, I'll have to get you to take your seat since there are no further questions, and then we'll bring you back up.
Thank you very much.
At the end of the meeting. Yes, sir.
Thank you for your patience. I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
All right, and, and next up, we've got Ms. Teresa Elamine, representing the Southern Anti-Racism Network regarding public safety and juvenile delinquency. If you would, state your name and, and your address, please, ma'am. Glad to see you're okay, by the way.
Well, not exactly. Teresa Elamine, 3911 Steam Mill Road. On a personal note, on January 4th, I was hit by a person charged DUI driving with an open container of liquor and following too close. My car was destroyed. I'm pretty banged up, but I'm alive. Do not drive drunk. Do not drink and drive in the interests of public safety.
Thank you.
The main reason that I'm here today is to talk about the situation with public safety in the community, the murders done by overwhelmingly young people. And I do wanna express my disappointment with the Public Safety Advisory Committee. I requested through an open records request the minutes of their meetings from 2019. They met six times, March through August. That was it. Two of the meetings, they did not have a quorum. Three of the meetings, they had speakers. Seth Brown, Captain Dent Fitzpatrick, and Sheriff Tompkins. One meeting, they had a rather lengthy agenda. I do not understand what they're all about, but it doesn't seem useful. But one thing I do know, good people, is that citizens do not need permission to be completely engaged to oversight over public safety and the police. And I am determined, because there's a movement, Mr. Mayor, nationwide, to have oversight over police departments, and I think it's important and germane to the situation here in Columbus, as you know. At the December 5th meeting, when we were together over at the South Columbus United Methodist Church, you talked about the need for a movement, Mr. Mayor. I hope you're serious about supporting that. Columbus Organizing Together, COT, is just one of several pieces of the movement that's coming together, and I think the public agenda kinda reflects some of that, if you don't mind me making that assessment. What we are doing in Columbus Organizing Together, we're a committee of about 30 to 40 people. We have three working groups, affordable housing, education equity, and public safety. I'm in the public safety working group, and so I'm very concerned about this so-called Public Safety Advisory Committee. I talked to one of the members who never attended a single meeting, so I called him up and asked him why. He hung up on me. Okay, we gotta get that together. Public Safety Advisory Committee, make it real. I do wanna say that we're meeting as a Columbus Organizing Together Movement Building Group on January 28th. It's your council meeting, so you won't be able to make it. We'll be meeting at the 4th Street Baptist Church. I expect there to be at least 30 of us there so that we can make sure we divide up into the three working groups for the work. I do wanna thank Councilmember House, who everybody knows, comes to everything and brings his lovely wife with him, and we thank him for his support in knowing what's going on, because I just think you just like to be in the loop on everything, Councilmember House, because he comes to everything, and we appreciate that. And I've also asked Seth Brown to speak at the meeting on the 28th, so I hope he has no obligations before counsel that evening, but the movement has begun. There are lots of folks meeting in their various groups. I'm trying to get people to consolidate this movement, but you got Marshall Countryman and his group, you got lots of groups. The movement has begun. Public safety, the murders got to stop. They got to. They got to stop. It's just too many. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Elamine. I appreciate it. And I appreciate your passion in getting involved and trying to create opportunities to address some of these things, because some of these things need to be addressed by the community.
Well, I made my mind up to live here for the rest of my life, Mr. Mayor. I love this town. I'm gonna enjoy the river, center, spring. I'm gonna be here for the rest of my life. So, I want it to be a safe place for me and everybody else.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. And next up, we have Ms. Alyssa Wilson representing New Life Second Chance Outreach, speaking about new bail and pre-trial detention ordinances.
Uh, how do I get this up on the...
You can, you can, yes, ma'am.
Oh, I guess I can get all young.
And if you would, ma'am, state your name and your address.
My name is Alyssa Wilson. My address is 3201 Maiden Road.
Okay. You have five minutes.
Y'all hear me? Okay. Um, I didn't want to put it up yet. I am here to speak on the issue of bail reform. Um, thank you. More than half a million Americans are currently behind bars without a conviction. That means they're technically legally innocent because they simply cannot afford bail. Why does this matter? Because poor people already are more likely to end up in the criminal justice system. While it serves as a means of ensuring defendants that they will appear for trial, bail can further penalize poverty as well as criminalize poverty. The rights to liberty, security, and equal justice under the law are cornerstones of justice systems throughout America. But pre-trial detention is being used at a rate of two to five times greater than the international average. The impact of this unfair, harmful, and inhumane practice spreads beyond the detainees, to families, communities, and the government itself. The pre-trial detention serves as an important purpose in the judicial process, but the practice of it, it is excessive, and it's arbitrary, and it traps innocent people in a legal limbo, stretching the capacity of already overcrowded prisons and jails, undermining the respect for criminal justice. Many people who have spent time in jail may eventually be acquitted or released without a trial. Others may be convicted of low-level crimes that do not even carry a prison sentence. Again, pre-trial detention affects all members of society, detainees, their families, and the larger community, resulting in a broad range of personal, social, and financial costs. Holding people in jail under cash bail for misdemeanor offenses costs the city money and food, housing, and resources in the case of either innocent people or for crimes which the punishment could be nothing more than probation or fines. When people cannot pay bail, they likely lose their job, their house, their cars, which not only punishes these people twice, but it increases recidivism as well, since we talked earlier about foster care. That is a big contribution to why a lot of children are in foster care, because their moms and both their daddies are in jail. And aside from there not being some type of caretaker law, this creates a domino effect of a lot of different areas. So, the purpose I'm coming to you is, we have seen money bail hold people hostage for weeks, months, and even years. From my last understanding with the sheriff, there are at least 14 to 16 people still sitting in the county jail who have not gone to court. So, just imagine what they have lost, technically have not been proven guilty. And normally, in my thing, when I read, when someone is innocent and being held and has to pay money to be free, that sounds like ransom, and it sounds like kidnapping to me. So, it is my ask, that I'm asking that the city council put an end to the mass caging of people who are presumed innocent. Instead of locking people up in jail we all pay for, I'm asking you all to create some type of legislation as far as holding people in jail who are there for simply driving without a license, driving without a seatbelt. The cost to the community is way much more than that. And so, very quickly, here's just some numbers. Are you able to see that? How do you do that? Here are some numbers. A great quote from a DA, "People should be in jail because they are a menace to society, because they are not going to show up for court. They should not be in jail because they are broke." Seventy percent, over 70% of people who are currently in local jails have not even been convicted of a crime yet. Whatever happened to the words innocent until proven guilty? Thirty-five is the key number, because it's a constitutional right to have a speedy trial. However, there was a man in Texas who spent 35 years in prison and had never even gone with a conviction. Couple of years ago in Dorton, Alabama, a man was in a county jail for 10 years before he even went to court. Number one, this is the life that's in limbo. Waiting on a court date can take months, even years, which restricts that person's ability to be able to properly work on their case. Two, that number's important, because research shows that being locked up for as little as two days can cost a person to lose their job, their home, their health to be affected if they're diabetic and haven't gotten those medications, and they can lose their children. And the last number is 45 to 1,500. That's the number in the county jail here in Columbus, between $45 and $50 is what taxpayers are paying, paying for a person to be incarcerated in the Muskogee County Jail. And if they got HIV, things like that, medication can be as high as $3,000. So, I would like for city council to kind of help us out with this and do something about that.
Thank you, ma'am. And I would, and thank you for bringing that up. We, listen, that's one of the things that we pay very close attention to. I know the sheriff does a great job of keeping us posted on the number of people that are incarcerated on a regular basis by office. And I know when we first got in office, and I'm not taking, I don't want to put it that way, about a year ago, there were over 1,300 people in jail. It has been, over the last several weeks, staying in the 920 to 930 range. And I know that there's been a lot of hard work by judges, by DA, by the sheriff, and by our police department to try to cut down on the number of nonviolent misdemeanor-type offenses. So, and I'm not gonna tell you that we don't have somebody in there that committed something a little bit more trivial, but I will tell you that it has been something that's been on the minds of all those involved in the Justice Department, not just law enforcement. And we continue to work on it. We appreciate you, you're putting attention on it. We'll keep working on it.
Thank you. I appreciate it, because a lot of people feel that there's a lot of myth, oh, bail makes, bail makes the community safer, when actually bail doesn't make the community safer. The young man that got out and killed Anaya Blanchard, he was on bail. It's about you doing something, and I do something, but because you've got money, you can get out. But because I don't have money, I have to stay in. But when you get out, you actually can do something worse, and it doesn't make, that means only, not because I'm guilty, but because I couldn't afford to get out. And that's not fair, and it's costing effects our children and our children.
Thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. Yes, Counselor Barnes?
Just a comment.
Yes, sir.
You're right on with this here, and I really appreciate your involvement and your attention. This is a instance, because I have come in contact with individuals in that same situation. I make no bones of the fact that I've been a recipient of something like this here. So, the bottom line is, we do need to take a look at this, and I will like to piggyback on what the mayor has said. We have made an improvement, a vast improvement, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate your personal involvement in it, but we do need to be vigilant of this. And the sheriff, by the way, I, she has done a tremendous job in working with this. But you wonder something, what I like about this here is that a concern, which is a legitimate concern, can be brought to this council, because it's only through knowledge and vigilance that we wipe out something that shouldn't be happening to begin with. And to your point, a person should not be held because they don't have money. I mean, to me, that's, I love this country, and to me, that's a travesty. But this is one thing that we really do need to work on for those individuals who are caught up in this here situation. So, thank you, Alyssa, and count me on board, because as I said, this is something that's personal.
I'm all you to that, now, probably.
This is something that's personal to me. I'm not talking about where I read the book.
Thank you, Kevin.
So, this is personal to me. And so, and I make, and you know why, why I tell people, if people see me on city council, you know, I'm on city council, but the city manager and I both are involved in the fatherhood program. And you know what I always tell those gentlemen that are locked up? I've been there, done that. You don't let your present situation define you as an individual.
That's right.
And there have been many cases in the past, I've seen individuals, I've brought it to the attention of the sheriff. And so, it's only through individuals like yourself. And that's why I love this country. You can come here, and you can talk about something that's a legitimate problem, and when you talk about it, you get people to thinking about it, you get action started. So, don't stop, because this is one area where we've made improvement now, but we're not where we should be.
Well, thank you. I just want our city to be safer, and we're hosting a bail reform forum on February 3rd in the auditorium, Southern Center of Human Rights will be there.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. We got it. We got it. Get you to take your seat. Thank you so much. All right. Next, we've got Ms. Elizabeth Melton regarding criminalization of the poor. Ms. Melton, if you would, please state your name and your address, and I'll start you five minutes after you do that.
Elizabeth Melton, 5824 Nisi Street, Columbus, Georgia. Good morning.
Good morning.
Here on behalf of the Libertarian Party of the Chattahoochee Valley to encourage your support of local efforts to end cash bail for nonviolent offenses. You've heard many statistics here today, but statistics are cold numbers and cannot impart the actual experiences of real human beings. Keeping that in mind, I would like to introduce you to the case of Dasha Fincher, who lives about an hour or so from Columbus and Forsyth, Georgia. She and her companion were running some errands in a borrowed vehicle when they were pulled over by Monroe County Sheriff's deputies for window Trent that appeared to violate local codes. The deputies remarked that the two appeared nervous and requested to search the vehicle. As innocent people will often do when they know that they have nothing to hide, they allowed the officers to do so, and the search revealed a plastic bag containing a blue crystalline substance. A roadside test kit determined the substance to be methamphetamine, and the two were handcuffed and taken to jail. Unable to afford the $1 million bond set by the judge, Ms. Fincher was left to languish in jail for three months before a proper lab test revealed the substance to be cotton candy, left there by one of the children of the owner of the car. To quote Ms. Finch, "I knew it was cotton candy, and for them to come back and say it was meth, I really didn't know what to say. I kept thinking, this is crazy. I'll get out tomorrow. Then I wasn't out by Sunday. I said, it's a holiday weekend. I'll be out Monday." Then every day turned into, I'll be out tomorrow. Many of us here are people of means. If we were unjustly jailed, we would be able to afford the bail or a bondsman. Many of us are well-connected and would never find ourselves in this position in the first place. But put yourself in the position of Ms. Fincher for a moment. Because you live paycheck to paycheck without the resources to rescue yourself, you spend three months, a quarter of one of your precious years of life, in jail without your freedom, without your dignity, and missing important life events like the birth of your grandchild. Even a couple of hours spent incarcerated is a couple of hours spent suffering, and in a country that prides itself upon being the example of freedom for all the world, this is unacceptable. While this particular case may seem like an anecdotal misfortune that is unusual in nature, it is actually a common occurrence. Vitamins, flour, deodorant, billiard chalk, honey, breath mints, and Jolly Rancher candies have all landed innocent people in jail for nonexistent crimes through the use of unreliable roadside tests. Then there are the instances of people who were simply in the wrong place at the wrong time, who were falsely accused intentionally by ill-meaning people, who were nowhere in the area but misidentified, and a whole host of other circumstances. Even a few days behind bars due to inability to post bail can result in job loss, the trauma of children being placed in foster care, and the inability to care for pets. Add to this the expense required to house, feed, and medically treat these innocent people in order to keep them in these already overcrowded facilities, and you have not only a miscarriage of justice, but also a waste of community resources. Ms. Fincher is now suing the three deputies in the Monroe County Council. Should she be successful in this suit, it is entirely possible that the taxpayers will bear the burden of righting this wrong. I encourage you to consider moving Columbus in the direction of Atlanta, Athens, and other municipalities across the country that are addressing this issue by eliminating cash bail for those who would otherwise be no danger to society of allowed to remain in their homes and employed in their jobs while awaiting trial. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Now, there is one question. Counselor Barnes?
Just making sure. I congratulate you as well, as I'm just saying what I said to Alyssa. But this is an issue that just needs to be under the spotlight, because as I've said to Alyssa, the individuals who are incarcerated, I spent 20 years of my life in the United States Army. I love this country above anything, marvelous, but there are certain things we need to work on. There are certain things, and this is one of them. So, thank you. And would you please leave your contact information with me? And Alyssa, please call me on this thing. Okay? Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Melton. Mr. Alfonso Dean regarding streetscape update, I-185 road signs and sound barrier panels. Welcome, sir. Please state your name and your address, and I'll begin your time right after that.
Thank you. My name is Alfonso J. Dean.
Raise the microphone up so we can hear you. There you go. Thank you, sir.
My name is Alfonso J. Dean, and I reside at 2164 Shelby Street here in Columbus, Georgia.
Thank you, sir.
I have two issues that I'd like to present before council this morning. One dealing with Interstate 185, and the other one dealing with Fort Benning Road and the streetscape program. Earlier, there was a Mr. Cook that came up, and he addressed the council based on some information regarding misnaming of roads. So, the issue that I have with the Interstate 185 has to do with some of the signage and some of the sound barrier panels that are mounted on the roadway. But first, I'd like to read a message that I sent to 311 about 10 years ago. It reads as follows. Traveling south on Interstate 185 to Columbus, Georgia, at exit 14, which is Smith Road, there's two signs indicating Columbus city limits and Muskogee County line. Continuing south at exit 10, there's another sign giving directions to Columbus. Also, at exit 8, another sign indicating Columbus one-half mile. Then, at exit 7, there's another sign, Columbus. And finally, traveling west on Airport Throughway as you come underneath the bridge, there's a sign indicating turn left to Columbus. My point is, there are all these signs on 185 directing travelers to Columbus, but when you back up to, correction, to exit 14, these two signs indicate that you're already in Columbus, Georgia. So, the response I got to my reply from the office that I sent my request to reads and follows. The Georgia Department of Transportation maintains all interstate signage in Columbus. As I read your email, your question is why are there multiple locations along I-185 that specify Columbus as a destination? To answer this question, you must first view Columbus designation signage as a visitor, not a resident. And that's exactly what I did when I submitted my request. I looked at it as a visitor, namely because, you know, we have Fort Benning, and you have many, many people from out of town coming in, traveling that route. So, I looked before I decided to put my message in as a complaint. I put myself in a position as a traveler. Continuing on. To answer this question, you must first review Columbus designation as signage as a visitor and not someone who is familiar with Columbus. For Interstate 185 motorists, the Manchester Expressway, State Route 85, is the primary designation and exit point to drive to the central business district. designation and exit point to drive to the central business district or downtown. So, if a visitor drove to Columbus from Atlanta as an example, they would not know which interstate exit would take them to downtown without current destination signage. Again, my point is, instead of having all this signage that says Columbus, when in fact you're already in Columbus, why not have the signs changed to reflect downtown if that's the point that's trying to be made? So, I would like, you know, the council members to probably put this on maybe our legislative agenda to try to get this corrected because I think the point they're trying to make is to send people downtown. The second issue that I have with Interstate 185 has to do with the sound barriers. You travel on 185 Southbound, a lot of, a lot of the signage.
Dean, I'm afraid your time's up, but I, you can, if you want to stick around towards the end of the meeting, you can get three more minutes.
Okay.
But I will tell you first, we will, we will refer this to the DOT office in Thomaston and, and let them address that because we have actually, City Manager and I have been in discussion about cleaning up the signage in our community. So, thank you for, for recognizing that and thank you for being on top of it even 10 years ago.
All right, thank you.
All right, and we'll, we'll give you an opportunity to come back at the end of the meeting if you don't mind.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, we do have a question though. Councilor Hough?
Yeah, good morning. Thank you for being here. Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge and I know who you are and we appreciate all that you do. This is the person that I refer to all the time, boots on the ground. He keeps up with everything that's going on. He reports it in to us. He keeps us updated. So, we'll check on it, make sure. Are you able now to enjoy the Bridge Walkover Victory Drive? Is it all finished?
I am, and I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Okay, next is Dr. Frye, representing the Columbus Community Orchestra. Welcome, sir.
Thank you.
If you would, state your name and, and your address and we'll begin your time when...
Yes, sir. William Frye, 6806 Ellis Drive, and I am the conductor of the Columbus Community Orchestra, an organization that our own Pops Barnes has said that it's one of Columbus's best-kept secrets. Yes, and I do appreciate this opportunity to, to speak to you. The organization is truly a community orchestra made up of volunteers. We are not the Columbus Symphony Orchestra, we are not the bar band, but the Columbus Community Orchestra. We meet on Monday nights and have been for the last 20 years and offering a variety of concerts per, per concert year that numbers about seven or eight per year. And one of our more important concerts during the concert season has been the Martin Luther King Tribute Concert. We've been doing this now for about, about six years and I want to bring that to your attention because I think it is a concert of, of great community interest and something that I think needs to be publicized even, even more. We are having a concert this, this Monday evening at St. Mark United Methodist Church on Whitestill Road. It's a free concert, just like all of our other concerts are, and we will be focusing on the, the music of the civil rights era, even though the concert is under the umbrella of a tribute to the legacy of Martin Luther King. We will be focusing on the important music of, of the civil rights era. For example, the song, "The Change Is Going to Come," "People Get Ready," "Someday We'll All Be Free," all were very important songs that came out of the civil rights struggle and basically were sort of a soundtrack of that time. We'll have other guest speakers. In fact, if you come out, you'll see Pops Barnes in his recurring role as the voice of, of Martin Luther King. And so, we really do appreciate this opportunity to promote this and would encourage a number of people to, to come out and to finish up the celebration of Martin Luther King Weekend with a concert on this Monday night, Martin Luther King Holiday Evening. 7:30, 7:30 PM, free and again, it's at St. Mark United Methodist Church.
Councilor Barnes?
You know, the Columbus Community Orchestra is one, is, is a treat if you have never, and it's free. It's free to the community and they do such a marvelous job. What I like about the Dr. Martin Luther King celebration each year, it's always a different motif, always a different theme. This theme will be centered on the little girls that were killed in the, in the bombing and, and, and all the music is geared towards that. So, I would invite everyone to come out. They do a marvelous job. But on the other side, they give concerts throughout the whole year, and I know you've been to them, and they're free, free entertainment, and they work very hard each Monday in between preparing for it. All accomplished musicians. It's very easy for me to do Martin Luther King because they always play behind me and they play loud, you understand? So, that makes me look good. But Dr. Frye, I do appreciate all that you and the Columbus Community Orchestra, what you do for the community, and I will invite everyone to come out. I stayed, you see, I stayed there, my part was over because I just love hearing good music. And so, would you repeat again when it, and, and can we also, Mr. Mayor, get the schedule?
Absolutely.
Of the Columbus Community Orchestra.
If you can, if you leave a schedule with us, we'll get it put on CCGTV so that...
And if you've never been to the performance during the Martin Luther King, I would invite you to definitely come out. It's, it's a touching tribute to not only what Dr. King did during the civil rights, but also a lot of the individuals who were involved in the civil rights movement as well, a lot of the unsung heroes, like the three little girls that were in the bombing. So, it's very touching.
And this concert will be a nice conclusion to all the activities that are occurring this particular weekend.
I try.
Thank you, thank you so much.
No, it's my pleasure.
Thank you, sir, what you and your group does for the city of Columbus and the quality of life, we appreciate it. All right. Next is Mr. Roy Goodman, speaking on the Columbus Water Works and the speeding problems on Armour Road. Welcome, Mr. Goodman. If you would, just state your name and your address and we'll start your time after you do that.
Okay, I'm Roy Goodman. I live at 3803 Armour Avenue, and my first concern is the breakdown between 311 and the Columbus Water Works. I was in an accident Thursday afternoon, destroyed the right side of my car, two tires and two rims, and the guy that we spoke to at Columbus Water Works, we figured out whose pothole was concerned, he was very rude to my wife, which was unprofessional, but at that time, I didn't know if it was the Department of the City. Now, I know it's a different department from the city. And right now, we're down to one car and the pothole was, and we complained about three weeks forward, and my neighbor has, lives in front of the pothole, right there in front of his house. And I'm just concerned if it's the breakdown between 311, getting the information to Columbus Water Works, and if I can get my case speeded up some way to find a vehicle, get back and forth to work.
Hey, we got Councilor Garrett first.
Mr. Mayor, I believe you're, you are, I guess, a representative to the Water Works since you're on that board. Mr. Goodman's reached out to me and I mean, the damage to his car was pretty significant and I have determined, when I, I kept emailing Director Beagle about potholes, that so many of the complaints I'm getting are Water Works-owned and whatever the process is for them filling in the holes, I know several areas in my district, this has been an issue over around the elementary school in the Winchester neighborhood. The, there's, there've been numerous complaints about the holes not being properly marked, about the way they're actually repaired and where they're, they're doing something that whatever our Public Works is doing seems to be more effective because we're driving, I mean, I just know folks that are driving over the potholes are not having these issues, but when these Water Works ones are repaired, sometimes there's sinkhole issues and different things that are popping up. But I do agree with Mr. Goodman, we've got to find some way because we are all the city, even though they're two separate entities, and 311 is the way we get things processed and it's very efficient. So, I'm not sure if there's a way that the Water Works could loop in a representative somehow where they could take a work order because it's, while we are referring out a work order, the, on the Water Works side, it's not being handled as quickly and efficiently as the, as we do with the city. And I think part of that's because we don't really have a, you don't, you can't copy Councilor Davis or me and say, oh, this is my district, y'all need to get this done. You know, our Public Works Department usually gets things done pretty properly when it's brought to their attention. But I just think there is a disconnect here and of course, anything you can do to, if you see the damage, I'm not sure who's, who's with their department, they'll be handling that, but the pothole caused some extreme damage to its vehicle.
Is the Water Works currently working on, on resolving the issues with the car? Do you know?
They have reached out to him, but they have not offered any resolution. He may be able to speak more to that.
Mr. Handas came out yesterday and he tried to be rude to me and I was a bad offer and kept my mouth shut with him, and he said he will pass it up to the VP and once he passes it up VP, it was out of his hands.
Okay. So, but there was a record, I guess, of this, this had been called in to us and it just wasn't...
Yeah, because we have called it in three or four different times in the last three or four weeks, and so has my neighbor, Mr. Goodman, has called it in, which is in front of his house.
All right. Councilor Davis?
Yeah, and I'd like to, I concur with Councilor Garrett and, and I'd like to echo some of his comments. I think he laid it out and explained it pretty well, but if there's a way, you know, I know I, I, our city manager would not allow our Public Works to go out there and not make sure that they fill these holes or whatever it may be in fixing our infrastructure to standards, that it is, it does meet standards and certainly if it doesn't, then the city's liable. And I know the city has a process, the city has, has always, I believe, taken care of these when it becomes a matter of that it's shown that the city is responsible, the city's got a process and it's done in a timely manner. And so, I would, I mean, I, you know, I would think that there's a lot of things happening with the Water Works. They are improving their, I guess, resources as far as it deals with infrastructure improvements. So, I would hope this would be a priority from a standpoint of maybe mirroring what the, the city does in the, in this type of situation, but I'm hoping that maybe we can communicate on Mr. Goodman's behalf and others because I get this, I get these same problems and then only find out people are really concerned about it and when I say concerned, they yell. And it's not the city, it always tends to be the Water Works. Now, I don't know what their standards are over there and I don't know what they require them to do, but they don't, I mean, there's a difference. You can tell the difference in, in, in certainly the administered work, so hopefully that can be communicated.
Yeah, what we'll do is...
Mr. Mayor, I know they're working on a customer advocacy center and I'm hoping that that has something to do with it, where better, better communication is occurs, but I mean, this gentleman's still, I mean, he, he's out of a, he has no transportation because of, of this matter and nobody seems to, how many days has this been?
Since Thursday, when I contacted you on Thursday, it's just happened.
Right, so, anyway, I, I think it's, I think it's clear.
All right, thank you. Yeah, what we'll do is I'll get with the city manager, we'll reach out to the Water Works, there's a solution to this. I mean, there's got to be, if we've got an intake and frankly, from the city's perspective, when we're put on notice of something like that, then if we don't get it taken care of in a timely manner, we do assume responsibility for damages. That's the only time that, that, that we will entertain the thought of, of helping to pay a deductible or something like that with an insurance. But we just need to, we just need to work a little closer with the Water Works, we'll get that line of communication worked out because we're doing our part in capturing that call and we just need to make sure that we are routing it to the place that the Water Works needs it to be routed so they can get on it. We'll follow up on that today because I know you're without a vehicle and we'll see if we can expedite it.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Mr. Goodman. All right, and next, Ms. Audrey Holston-Palmore, an appeal to the council to render a motion of approval for a meeting with the risk management. If you would, state your name, ma'am, and, and we'll start your time after you state
Good morning, I think it's still morning time. My name is Audrey Holston-Palmore, Mrs. Audrey Holston-Palmore. My address is 1035 Lawyer's Lane, Columbus, Georgia. Today is Tuesday, January 14, 2020. I have on the screen for the public attention, the manner in which I have constantly, without any regrets, made an application for the public agenda. I want you all to see that it's a simple process and if you have any concerns, this is a good place to end up at, in front of the city council, which includes the city attorney and the city manager. The reason I say I am Mrs. Audrey Holston-Palmore because Mrs. means a lot to me. It takes a lot of work to be a Mrs. and a lot of times you create offsprings and that takes a lot of time to be continuously concerned about those that you create. There was a statement made by Mr. Glenn Davis, one of our counselors, who said, "A lot of children have suffered because of adults in their lives." I've often thought about that and I've often expressed that throughout my lifetime as an adult. Well, as I said, I filled out this kind of application because in my thought process, I, I think about this. A journey begins with one step and I always tell my children, my, my offspring, three of them, BBW, do what must be done. If I want to be on the public agenda, I have to show up the Friday before appearing on the public agenda by 12 o'clock in order to get it done. And then I say to my children, before they leave outside the house, I have a sign right at the door, "Effort equals results." I am making an effort to speak to the city council, which includes the city manager and the city attorney. I wrote, "I am applying to appear on the public agenda on the above date for the purpose of appealing to the council members to render a motion of approval for me to meet with the risk manager of the Columbus City Government." For those of you who don't know anything about what I've done up until now, since 2018, I have appeared before these citizens of integrity who represent our city government and I have asked for an opportunity based on the recommendation of the city manager, Eli, Isaiah Hughley, to take my concern about the Columbus Parks and Rec to the risk manager. Well, it's been at the request that I have that I go and fill out my application, which I shall continue to do. I shall continue to do. I think my next time availability will be March 14, 2020. Because, see, I have a very deep-seated concern why I keep coming because I have a little grandson, two years old, very, very dear to me. His beloved mother and the support of the family wanted to have an outing at one of the Columbus Parks and Rec. I'm going to ask for three more minutes at the end of the clerk clerk of council's agenda.
I assumed you would, ma'am, but you'll have to take your seat now. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your attention.
Yes, ma'am. Counselor Thomas?
Mr. Mayor, I'm a little concerned that Mr. Hamlick and Mr. Phillips-
Oh, ma'am, you take your seat. Thank you.
Oh, he's at my seat. Okay. Thank you. Were on the public agenda and given only five minutes to make their presentation to us on a request to appeal an action that this council took. It would seem to me that everybody involved, I know it's going to take more than five minutes to to get this issue even presented, much less have any. And so I would request that from here forward, anytime a citizen comes to us with a request for a review of something of this nature, that it not be put on the public agenda. And I've been sitting here trying to think of which agenda should it go on and because this particular one is the Finance Department, I think probably the city manager's agenda. It may not be. It may be somebody else. But to limit the citizen who is appealing an action of one of our departments to five minutes, I think, is not appropriate to do. And so I'm requesting that if requests like this come to the clerk's office, that the clerk refer them to whomever you decide, the city manager or whoever, and it go on that agenda.
You're talking about the license?
I'm talking about anything of that nature when the if if one of our departments, in this particular case, it was he was appealing the alcohol license. It may be, for example, in inspections and codes that somebody is appealing something that they've been turned down for there. That kind of issue is not, I think, appropriate for the public agenda because of the time involved in getting the information out to the council, having response from our employee and, you know, trying to come to some decision on it. So I would request that that be given some thought and concern and consideration if you are appealing an action of an employee of this government in that manner. I'm not talking about if you're here complaining about, you know, complaining about an employee. I'm talking about if you if you're looking to appeal, then it ought to be on some other agenda and not limited to five minutes.
Well, we'll get with the city manager. We'll try to come up with maybe some guidelines because the key is to make sure that it has some consistency so that we don't end up in a situation where somebody feels like they've gotten slighted compared to somebody else. So but we will. We'll bring that back to council and we'll try to refine that so that we-
And I'm sure that if someone were to call the city manager's office and say, "I want to be on the city manager agenda because of this situation," the city manager, I think, understands the issue that I'm trying to raise here and would say, "Yes, this is appropriate according to our guidelines," or, "No, it's not. You need to be on the public agenda."
Right. I agree with you. I think the challenge is that typically when somebody wants to appeal to council, they have already gone through the process with the city manager and with the necessary staff. And there's been some pretty strong grounds for taking that action.
Right.
So they're left with applying up to now, applying to be on the public agenda, to be able to come up and and ask council to consider it. And, you know, I don't, some people, you know, can get through it. Mr. Cook got through it in two minutes, what he was asking, and others didn't get through their first point.
But see, Mr. Goodman was not was not appealing an action of this government.
Right.
Mr. Hemrick, I'm sorry.
Hemmick.
He was. David was. And that's the difference to me. Okay? And and so I would be more than glad to help work with some to put together some-
We'll bring it.
Guidelines or whatever, but let's let's take a look at that and see if we can do a better job there.
Yes, ma'am. Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. To add to what Ms. Thomas said, maybe this government could be a little bit more proactive also. And if they've gone through the process where they've talked to the department head, they've talked to you, then you bring it up, you know, you give them that option to come before council as part of your agenda or something like that. And be take a little bit of more of a proactive approach in that way. Maybe that's a situation we could consider.
We'll do it. Ms. City Manager?
All right, Mr. Mayor. I do hear the concern and certainly agree. And I'll be talking to the mayor. And I just think right off, my preference would be that if we're going to cause a business to shut down, obviously, I could simply just put it on my agenda and ask for your approval. And they could come and be able to speak to what's on my agenda and asking you to approve revoking the license or whatever. But we'll figure it out and follow up with you.
Yeah, because that's pretty serious when a business gets shut down.
Yeah. Okay. Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'll move on with-
Yes, sir.
-the city manager's agenda. First item on the agenda is approval to serve as fiscal agent and apply for the 2021 Family Connection Grant of $50,000 from the Georgia Department of Human Services. There is no match.
Motion second, approve and a discussion. Bruce, you can queue it. Counselors, you can enter your votes, please. Okay. Let's approve.
The next one is for $3,246, but can get complicated. The University System of Georgia, on behalf of the Cooperative Extension, they require or want us to sign a contract. It's we've got $3,200 in our budget to pay a part-time person for the 4-H program. They want a contract and they want to pay that person and then we reimburse them. And so what I'm asking you for is approve my signing an agreement with Cooperative Extension through the University System of Georgia. It's for $3,246 and it's in the budget.
There's a motion to approve. Is there a second? A motion and a second. Any discussion, any questions? All right. Please queue it. Y'all can place your votes and that passes.
Got some purchases. Electronic monitoring equipment and services for the sheriff's office and the Muscoe County Juvenile Drug Court. It's $30,000 for the sheriff and $6,000 for juvenile drug court on an as-needed basis for electronic monitoring equipment and services, asking your approval.
Motion second, approve the electronic monitoring equipment. Any discussion or questions? All right, you can queue it, please. Place your votes. That passes.
Got maintenance, repair and operation, industrial supplies and twos from the National IPA Agreement on an as-needed basis for various city departments.
Motion to approve B and C. Any discussion?
And C is just for bulldozer repair for $32,139. It's for the landfill, to move rubble at the landfill, and we need to take care of that.
All right. If there's a motion second, no discussion. If you can queue it, Bruce. Counselors, you register your votes, please. That passes. Both of those passed.
And, Mr. Mayor, I would just call to your attention two emergency purchases over the holidays. It was two pickup trucks, one for solid waste and for recycling collection division. The two pickup trucks, a total of $60,288. They were $30,144 each from the state contract. Those were emergency purchases. We don't need your vote on that.
Okay. Counselor Davis?
Yeah, one question, Ms. City Manager. I know these are in the budget. Are they 2019s or 2020s?
These would be 2020, I believe, coming from out of the visual forward. I'll have to-
Are there any 2019s left on the lot? Do we know this?
Okay. Of course, they come from state contracts, so we purchase whatever.
Do we know if there's 2019s left on the lot?
I don't know. I don't know. And I don't think I don't have the answer right now.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you, sir. Counselor Barnes, did you?
No, I ain't in person.
Oh, okay. Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. Can you explain to me these these contracts, these state contracts? I mean, are we locked into them? Because if there's if there's a less expensive way of buying of replacing these items, I'd like us to look into those if we're not bound by a state contract or something.
Well, and let me just say, and we've been down this road before, on the state, when vehicles are on state contract, we allow local dealerships. If they can they can go online and see what the state contract price is. And if their price is 2%, is it 2%? In other words, it could be $30,000 on state contract and they weren't listening to me. But if it's $30,000 on state contract and a local dealership can go online and see that vehicle is $30,000, if they can do 2%, they could do 2% above the $30,000 and we'd still buy it from them.
Okay, but but the action has to be taken by the dealership instead of us reaching out to the dealership and saying, "Listen, this is what we're looking for. This is the state contract price. Can you beat it?"
I'm going to let her come and explain. And we've we've been and we've done it before. We'll solicit from the local dealership and council members who've been here know this. And and they look at the state contract price and then they still come to us because they can't beat the state contract price. And it's probably because they're buying in large volumes and they're doing it statewide that the local dealership cannot beat that price. You want to?
Well, I was just going to say that us utilizing state contracts is really a matter of expediency. The state contracts, the vendors that are out on state contract, they've already gone through an RFP process that is comparable to our RFP process, so it's no different than us doing a process. So we are trusting that the state's RFP process is the same as ours so we can purchase off of vehicles off of the state contract or any other equipment off of state contract because they've gone through a process. And there is a local preference to vendors, however, that still would require a bid process. We would have to put out a request for bid. And as the city manager stated, most cases, when we put it out for bid and we reach out to the local vendors, they still cannot beat the state contract.
So and in the name of Red McDaniel, I got to just make sure you're clear that this is Red McDaniel's.
Yes.
I mean, he was a stickler for this.
Well, but I think the point is when we're buying vehicles, we do bid process. We look at the state contract, we look at other vendors and we get the best, most efficient price we can. These were emergency purchases. So because of the tight timeline, they used the state contract. However, if a local vendor is within 2% of what they're charging, we'll use the local vendor.
Yeah.
But when we go out for bid for vehicles, we're going to get the best price.
But I but I just wanted to be clear that the local vendor can mark their price up 2% over state contract and we'd still buy it from the local vendor.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
But I just want to say again that everybody around this table know that Red McDaniel would-
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. And it's this building is going to be, you know, named in his honor. But but if there are no other questions, we're going to go into the updates and presentations. And the first is Dorothy McDaniel. Is she here?
There are a bunch of them.
Okay. Come on down. We've got Canopy Restoration Project from Trees Columbus. And we've got Dorothy McDaniel and she's got a lot of company with her.
All right. So I'm excited about this presentation because, for one, I can talk about Trees forever, but I promise not to do that today. But also because this is a good way for us to remind you all about this great relationship that Trees Columbus has had with the consolidated government. Trees Columbus, for anyone who does not know, is a nonprofit. Our mission is to plant, preserve and protect tree canopy. We were founded in 2000, so 20 years ago. We partnered with the Columbus Consolidated Government on drafting the tree ordinance, several overlay ordinances, partnered with the CCG on the Veterans Parkway streetscape. We have even partnered with the Columbus Consolidated Government to go to the Georgia Supreme Court to protect our local trees. So I am back today with good news that I'm going to be telling you all about a solution to a problem. And it is a problem that you all heard a I know, right? Like, how often do we get to do that? It's a problem that you all heard a little about in December. So I'm going to tell you about the Canopy Restoration Project. You will hear from me. You will hear from George Barker, who has many certifications, which is good to know. And you'll hear a little bit from Rachel Fleming, who is a CSU graduate student, and she's done some analysis of of information for us. There we go. I don't know if we're going to get audio. Okay. So while this is playing, I'm going to tell you, this is a very short, about one-minute video about the city of Louisville. City of Louisville is taking on a multimillion-dollar project, like $15 million. They're investing in urban tree canopy because, as you'll see here, they have a lot of the same issues-
... storms, pests and old age.
We have-
During that time, the tree canopy coverage in Louisville dropped to just 37%, well below other cities in the region. And since 1996, the American Lung Association has given the city a failing grade for air pollutants like ozone. What's more, Louisville is one of the nation's fastest-warming urban heat islands. Parts of the city can be 10 degrees hotter than surrounding areas. Greenheart researchers think more trees could be a solution. They can improve air quality, cool neighborhoods, help combat global warming and even muffle noise pollution. Chris Chandler is the Nature Conservancy's Urban Conservation Director in Kentucky.
When you look at a street like this, what do you see? I see an aged neighborhood with a declining urban tree canopy. It's had a lack of stewardship over the years and a lack of investments. Our old trees are dying and they're not being replaced and managed over time. Nature is not a nice-to-have. It's a must-have.
So again, that was just to to kind of bring it back. We're not the only ones who have this problem of declining tree canopy, right? We're losing trees because of age, disease, storms- We're losing trees because of age, disease, storms. We have aging tree canopy that is causing issues like rusted infrastructure. We heard about some of that at the December meeting from Councilman Huff, too. So we have trees that need care. We also have places where we need to be planting trees. We have what, um, what the, uh, was talked about in a national conference. We have a tree equity issue in, in Columbus. We need, um, we need to be more deliberate about our distribution of tree planting, tree maintenance, and, and tree care, and we can. We have developed a unique solution here in Columbus. So because we have this ongoing partnership with Urban Forestry and this, in this communication with Urban Forestry Division, we've been working on this since about twenty-fifteen to try to come up with a solution. Capacity is an issue, um, with, with Public Works and with the Urban Forestry Division in, in a, in the way to be proactive, right? We wanna be proactive. We don't wanna necessarily be in a position of being reactive and only being able to do this management when a tree falls, when it causes a problem. So we developed this, um, unique solution that is the canopy restoration project, and this is one of my favorite pictures, but our mayor kindly came out and hosted the launch, the public launch of this project. This is the first program of its kind. We looked nationwide, how are other communities dealing in a public-private partnership with management of public trees? We couldn't find a solution we thought really applied here at a community our size, so we thought, well, let's make one up. Y'all saw the canopy study in December, that, that referenced tree canopy across our community. It was at about forty-seven percent, if I, if I remember correctly, which is good to know. But when you're talking about managing those trees and keeping them healthy, you actually need to know more than that percentage. You need to go down on the ground and see what is going on with those trees. Are they healthy? Do they need to be pruned? Do they need to be removed? Do the, do new trees need to be planted? That's the kind of work that is tough for Urban Forestry to get out there and do, and that's what this partnership is about. Again, it is a public-private partnership, so working with Urban Forestry, with the division chief and, and some of his crew chiefs, we said, what do y'all need? What is the information you need to get out there and keep this tree canopy healthy and plant new trees? So having that information, that's when Trees Columbus applied for a grant. Uh, we received two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, uh, of private funds to develop a system to gather that information, um, manage that information, share it with Urban Forestry, and, you know, get some of this work done. This is a little bit of a tangent, but I want y'all to know this. Part of this program, of the canopy restoration program, is Trees Columbus working with private citizens. So that is something we can do that Columbus Consolidated Government cannot do. Now, why does that matter? It matters because the vast majority of our tree canopy is actually on private property. And so whereas Columbus Consolidated Government has all they can do dealing with the public trees, we can work in an education, um, in an education, you know, standpoint and an advocacy standpoint and help our private citizens, uh, increase the health of their own tree canopy. So that is a piece that we're taking on. It doesn't necessarily, uh, fit into the rest of this discussion, I just want y'all to know that piece. Okay, so let's talk about this partnership. Uh, we received this grant of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, consulted the, the Urban Forestry Division and said, what is it that y'all need? So that is where Trees Columbus worked with our arborist, and George will tell you more about that, to actually develop this data collection system. Now, there's a photo of him out there trying it out, um, and the yellow is a GPS, you know, a GPS locator on his head. Uh, we tried a few different things. There was a lot of trial and error, um, but we did create this system for collecting information that works. So the idea is Trees Columbus, our arborist, collected this information that would allow proactive management, right? So we have a study area that I'll show you. The idea is, we wanna manage these trees before they are a problem. We wanna plant new trees before this generation of old trees has died. This is an example of some of that information. So a lot of communities will do something called a tree inventory. They will pay, have a contractor come in and collect, and do a tree inventory of the entire community that gives you a massive amount of information. But that's really not what, um, the, the arborist told us that he needed. This was Scott Jones, who actually retired back in, in July. Um, that's not what he told us in twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen. He said, that's really not what we need to manage those trees. We need smaller areas, targeted areas. We need more targeted information. So where's the tree? What kind of tree is it? Um, does it have issues? And for example, this one had what's called a minor defect. It needs to be pruned, but it's not a top priority. It's not gonna hurt anybody. But it does need to be gotten to in the next, you know, one to three years. So that's the kind of information that provides what's called a maintenance protocol for that area, so the crews know where to go. They know what needs to be done. The other, uh, cool thing about this program is that it is, which was really the cornerstone of it, it had to be something that's replicable, right? Because tree issues are gonna be a little different in different areas. This is the first area we worked because at the time, this is where Urban Forestry was getting the most three-one-one calls. This is where they were getting the most emergency calls. For example, a tree across the road, a tree on a power line, a tree falling on a car. It also has a, a park, so we're looking at two different kinds of public trees. We're looking at right-of-way trees and we're looking at park trees. So even there, we've got some different issues that, that George will talk about. But replicable, it can be taken anywhere in our community, scalable, so you're biting off a piece of work that you can do. The green, just so y'all know, are the trees that were inventoried. They were, they were surveyed, really, and placed on that maintenance protocol. The yellow are, uh, potential planting locations. So that is an area where you could plant a tree. It doesn't mean you have to plant a tree there, but once the city has placed a tree order, it says, all right, you know, in this block, there's the potential to plant three to five trees. Urban Forestry planting crew, you know, take it from here. So this is what it looked like on the ground. This is sort of a, this is our phase one. So the Urban Forestry Division gets the data, they get that yellow dot, they will then do the groundwork. Urban Forestry decides, is this really an appropriate place to plant a tree? If yes, then you get the, the white circle and the X on the ground. Um, this is a, a photo here, you'll see some young trees that were planted, um, last planting season. I also marked that large tree, the mature tree you see in the background, because that tree was also surveyed, placed on a maintenance protocol. Does it need to be pruned? Does it need to be removed? If so, how urgent is it? Um, and then this is the evaluation form, and this is actually where I'm gonna hand it over to George. Where's my friend George? All right, George, take it away.
I'll forewarn you that I do trees and not technology, and I, if anybody can gum one of these things up, I can, so, so bear with me. This is just a, an example of, of the, what we produce from the system and, you know, in part, in developing this system, not only do we want a repeatable process, but we wanted one that was efficient. And, you know, I've, I've done a lot of these things throughout the country over the last twenty-five years, and there, there's a lot of different variances and a lot of things you can do, but what we're trying to do is get basic information and what we could collect quickly. And part of that process is the GPS unit. Dorothy showed you the little GPS thing that I wore on my hat called a bad elf, and, you know, that thing is like a five-hundred-dollar unit, and it used to be I've been collecting fifteen, fifteen-thousand-dollar GPS units. Um, and, and we did try some of the more expensive ones, but you get to that point where you're spending more time trying to get an accurate point. So you have to make some allowances, and of course, you can move this data, but you'll notice that, uh, on this planting space, and if you see that map well enough, uh, the GPS isn't always exactly right. We did not actually put a planting space in the middle of that intersection, in the middle of that road. Uh, but we do have the availability, and it, it really is amazing how GPS technology has changed over the years. So those little, those little units do allow phones to collect a little bit better data than if we were just using the phone by itself, but it's still not, it's still not perfect. And so what you see on the, on the left side of that screen is a tree at, uh, at that address. Uh, it's a thirty-one-inch oak and it's, it's a class of twenty-five, which we, we grade things on a scale zero to a hundred, zero being a dead tree, a hundred being a perfect. So you can see that this tree is in pretty poor, poor condition. It has a major structural defect to it, and we have a recommended maintenance of remove with a priority one. And we rate everything in priority one, two, and three. Uh, priority one note meaning that, you know, this tree needs immediate attention. Uh, priority two is, you know, it doesn't need immediate attention, but it needs to be, you know, dealt with fairly soon. And then priority three would just be a routine maintenance. And here is that said tree. And so we look at this tree, um, you know, we, we look at the top of it where it's got some previous failure. So we've already had two large branches, and if you look, those branches are actually the main trunk. It's where years ago, the main trunk split up and it's got two, basically two trunks. And so both of those trunks have failed, and you can see the one on the right side has already began to lose bark. And so what we look at, what we're really trying to evaluate as far as structural integrity is the amount of decay and rot that's within a tree, because that's when a tree loses its strength. And I'll get you to go back to your, your school days of, of really what rot and decay is. And rot and decay are basically fungus that get into a tree and they start eating the cell walls to where there's no, no strength left in the tree. And as you know, that in South Georgia, where we live, uh, we, we have a climate that is very favorable for fungal growth. We have heat and we have moisture. As we all know, we've been experiencing some the last week in January, we're in seventy degrees and constant humidity. So decay is a real problem, and, and where we've struggled sometimes is arborists is trying to determine how much decay is in that tree and at what point is the tree gonna lose its structural integrity. The bad thing about it is, for a tree, it has that, that layer that it protects itself with called bark. Problem is, we don't know how much decay is behind that bark, so we have to look at signs and symptoms to see and make educated guesses as to how much decay and when is that tree gonna lose its strength. In a case like this, it's, it's fairly easy because we can see that decay has already entered through that, into that tree. It's just a matter of how far down that tree it's gone. The other thing we look at when we're evaluating a tree for risk, uh, and, and risk potential is what kind of targets are underneath it. And we can see under this tree, we have a parked car, we have a lawnmower, and, you know, I don't know how long that lawnmower's sitting there, but we can tell it's a winter picture, and I don't know, uh, if it was my lawnmower, it probably had been sitting there since August, but, um, you know, we, we do look at those aspects of, okay, what, what kind of problems might we have if this tree fails? And, you know, for an arborist, something, driving down the street, I'll pick that out just like that, but most people won't ever notice that tree problem. And you can imagine, you can see it pretty evidently here without any leaves on. Imagine that tree fully leafed. Nobody would ever see that, that potential problem. And Scott understood that, and that's the reason why Scott wanted us to go out and start identifying where these problems were before they became an actual problem. And it's part of being proactive, and, you know, we understand that there's just not enough resources within the city departments to be able to provide those type things, and so that's really what we were, what we were going out to do. So in this area, we took, we inventoried a total of twenty-six-hundred-and-three trees. They're placed in the protocol. That means they are all put into the system, uh, GIS system that we had developed. Uh, they all have, you know, maintenance requirements, um, the ones that require maintenance. Uh, fourteen-hundred-and-nine of these trees were on the street right-of-ways, eleven-hundred-and-ninety-four were in Lake Monal Park. And then, uh, we, we identified fourteen-hundred-and-one tree planting spaces. And so the important part of this information, or one of the most important parts, is maintaining the data, and maintaining the database. So when we do work, that the work gets updated and the database gets updated, um, so we know where we're at. Now, on the, the map on the right is just a little subset of the main project area that we did. We did, we did this little area first to sort of test our system. And so we went through there and we collected information on these streets. You see the green of the trees and the orange are the planting spaces. And so we gave this list to, uh, Urban Forestry after we completed it, so they had a list of the priorities of, of trees that needed to be maintained, either removed or pruned. And so they went back, they went in and did these prunes and removals. Um, and I will might add that, uh, one of the trees that they went to, by the time they got to it, had already failed and fallen down. Um, so we, uh, gave all that information. As soon as they had all the work completed, they gave us the information back, and we were able to go in and update the database. Scott understood, like I said, the importance of being, maintaining and doing this work and keeping it prioritized. And so what we, we sensed that some of this work wasn't happening, that we weren't being as proactive as a city anymore, and that was our concern. So we went to the, the, the CCG budget and we looked at the KPI numbers. And from two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty, I won't read the numbers, but you can see the, the digression of tree work that's been done during that time period. And then when we look at the budget even further, uh, it, it, it appears that the, the budget for that department has increased over that time period and, and the number of employees has remained the same. So we just, we're sort of suspect about why, why these numbers are falling. Uh, and we understand that it's priorities. We understand it's a big department. We understand there's a lot of other things that go on. But what, what concerns us is that these priorities are not, are, the tree priorities are slipping because they're not on everybody else's priority. And as Trees Columbus, that's what we're here to do, is to remind everybody that these trees need to be, need to be on, on priorities because they're not gonna get the three-one-one calls. But these trees have been evaluated by myself, and I am a professional, have done this, these types of evaluations throughout the country. And the trees that we give to the city, we would think that they would become a priority as far as, you know, maintenance needs. And it's sort of like, we understand because people don't see them, they're not the squeaky wheel. And we all know that sometimes the squeaky wheel isn't where the real problem is. So, uh, what, what these numbers here are, this is the total number of priority removals and prunes on the city right-of-ways in that area. Now, we'll say that these numbers were generated, the, the dollar values were generated from a per, an average per tree cost. And so if these trees were done, like if you were to bid it out and a contractor would did it, these prices would be lower because they would all be done at one time, as opposed to individual, individually being done. And you'll notice that, that there's thirty-seven removals, and I, if you remember from the last slide, that, that makes up about four percent of the trees that were projected to be removed this year. And then a hundred prunes represents about three percent, a little over three percent of the trees to be pruned this year. Um, and we're halfway through the year, and to my knowledge, that only one has been pruned, and that prune came because, uh, we had a failure, uh, and, and one of the limbs fell and hit somebody's car that, um, so that generated a three-one-one. In the parks, we had a hundred and seventy-eight removals and we had a hundred and eighty-nine prunes. Now, here again, these dollar amounts, because it's all in a park, would be greatly reduced from that if we did them all at one time. But this picture was taken shortly after we had one of the, the storms that came through. Out of all the trees in that park, all the ones that came down, all but two of them were on our list of priority removals or prunes. Um, so here again, being proactive, we could avoid some of the mess that was out there at the park at the time. And then what we also did is we were, while we were out at the park, we went through the park. A lot of times, after a storm, what our big problem is, trees maybe not fall or didn't fail totally, but we've got hanging limbs, we've got wood that's been twisted, so we looked for other problems. And so we were able to identify a few of these problems, that we were able to give that information to Urban Forestry, and they went out and, and took care of the problem. But these are problems that would not be noticed or recognized by the average person. So, one of the things that we, uh, we think that this project has done, and we, you know, we've made a proposal at the request of Scott last summer to make a proposal to the city to keep this project going because the private funding and this grant ends, you know, later this year, and so he understood the importance of it. And so one of the, one of the side effects of it, I guess you could say, is that, you know, sometimes when you have people that aren't in the day-to-day operations, we see things a little differently, and we can see things a little, uh, from a different angle. It's sort of like thinking outside the bark. I mean, I think outside the box. But you get, sometimes you get certain neighborhoods or certain areas that have special conditions, and sometimes they fall out of the normal scheme of things, and it's good to have sometimes some extra expertise to be able to, to come in and look at those areas. Sometimes we have special situations like we have on Broadway. And we all know the economic benefit that those trees on Broadway provide, yet the, the, the maintenance and needs of those trees are different than they are from anywhere else on, in, in the city. We have, you know, we have aphids that we need to worry about, we have spider mites, we have scale, we have all these different things. We have all these different things going on with those trees. But those trees are vital to that area. And the current Urban Forestry Division, they, they can't keep up with all that. I mean, it's just, it's a lot extraordinary. And it's where we can also introduce private funding to help take care of that because we know there's a lot of business and a lot of people that take care of that. So, it's one of those areas and situations where a public-private partnership can really be, uh, can really be advantageous. So, it brings in that private sector. And that's what, you know, really what we're talking about here. And I'm going to use this slide to introduce Rachel Fleming. But, uh, we will come back and I'll touch a little bit more on this creative solution in just a minute. And I, I'm tickled to death to be able to, uh, introduce Rachel. I'm going to embarrass her a little bit before she gets up here. Um, Ra- Rachel is a grad student at CSU and she came to us Trees Columbus, uh, last fall. And she ran some environmental analysis on all this data we collected. And, you know, I know as, as us aging people, we always sort of, you know, talk about the younger generation and worried about the younger generation. But, you know, working with Rachel for, for four months really gave me belief in, you know, we, we are in good hands in the future. Uh, just a wonderful attitude, wonderful work ethic, um, and very smart on top of it all. So, um, I'm going to turn it over to Rachel for just a few minutes.
All right. Hello, everyone. My name's Rachel, like George said, and I'm a CSU grad student and studying, uh, environmental science. So, and today, we're going to get a little science lesson, which I know we're all super excited about, on the environmental impact of the trees that were being studied as a part of the canopy restoration project. All right. So, I'm going to start by explaining how I got all these data and figures and numbers that I'm going to show you in the coming slides. The program that I use is called iTree. And it's a very specific program made for analyzing the benefit, the environmental benefit, and the impact of trees. And it's produced by the USDA Forest Service. And the way that it works is that you input manually the data that you collected in the field. So, when they went out and took all those measurements with the computer program, I put that individually, all twenty-four-hundred trees and all their condition and their age and maintenance and stuff like that. And it's merged with local weather and air pollution data. And then, it goes through a huge computer model. And there's lots of scientific equations that are applied along the way. And it outputs a final report for you. And so, all these numbers come from that final report that was processed. And the specific one I used was iTree Eco because it's an ecological assessment. So, one of the coolest features that comes from iTree is its forecasting, forecasting ability. So, basically, it uses the current health, age, species, location of the tree. And it estimates your population from what you, how many trees you started with to tell you in thirty years, what's the number of trees that that population is going to have. So, you can see with the twenty, about twenty-five-hundred trees that I inputted, the implications for thirty years from now is to go all the way down to seven-hundred trees. So, only seven-hundred of those original twenty-five-hundred are going to be still living thirty years from now. So, the next forecast that I did was the same twenty-five-hundred trees, their current condition, age, everything. And I just added what would happen if they're, if we planted just a hundred trees every year for the next thirty years. And you can see it makes a significant difference in the population. It's, it's ending up at twenty-three-hundred trees, which is still a little bit lower than what we started with. But we can expect that because of the current age of our trees. It's a hundreds, maybe not quite enough to make it, uh, to a successful thriving population. But it, can you imagine if we just planted two-hundred or three-hundred trees a year? It would really grow and we would have a thriving canopy instead of the declining one that we have now. So, the final forecast that I ran was done by taking those original twenty-five-hundred trees and just seeing what would happen if those twenty-five-hundred trees had perfect condition. So, they were at a hundred percent and they were perfectly healthy. Well, you can see that even just having twenty-five-hundred trees in perfect condition, the population is still going to decline because you have to continue to plant more trees. Even a hell, perfectly healthy tree is going to reach the end of its age. It's going to die. And you need to continuously be rebuilding the population over time to have a successful canopy. So, just so you can see all three of those at the same time, I made this little graph. That red line is what's currently, if we do absolutely nothing, don't plant any trees. And that blue line is the top, uh, if we plant just a hundred every year for the next thirty years. So, another really cool feature, feature that iTree has is it uses your data and calculates the annual monetary benefit that, that those trees that you've put in are offering to your environment. So, this is a value that's the replacement value and the functional value of the tree together. And just with those twenty-four-hundred-and-twenty-five trees that were processed, they have a value of two-point-one-two million dollars. And that's a value that will continue to increase and grow if we build their canopy and have more trees and continue to build or grow more trees. In the coming slides, I'm going to kind of break that down and explain just a few of the components and tree functions that produce that number. And we'll start with one of the major functions that a tree has to offer to our local environment, and that's improving air quality. And they do that through carbon storage, sequestration, oxygen production, and pollution removal. And basically, what happens is all those things that are floating around in the atmosphere when they come in contact with the tree, there are pores on the tree's surface that open up and intake those. So, that means they're no longer in our atmosphere. The more trees there are, the less opportunity there is for these pollutants to have an impact on our public health. Uh, carbon dioxide in specifically is what's used by the tree to then produce oxygen, which we all know is a vital part of our life. So, the, um, twenty-four-hundred-and-twenty-five trees alone are producing forty-nine tons of oxygen a year. But unfortunately, because they're going to decline, that means they're going, there's going to be less oxygen production. But if we were increasing the trees, planting more trees, we would have more oxygen production. We would have more pollutant removal and we would have a cleaner air. Okay. So, now, we're going to take a look at the functional values associated with the carbon and pollution removal. So, again, just those twenty-four-hundred-and-twenty-five trees, they have a carbon sequestration value of thirty-one-hundred-and-forty dollars a year. And then, the pollution removal have a value of twelve-hundred-and-thirty dollars per year. So, another crucial function of our urban trees, um, and what they have to offer to us, is they're reducing runoff. And that's a particularly important process in an urban area because an urban area is filled with a lot of impervious surface. So, that basically means that there's a lot of concrete and paving and pollutants, oil, pesticides. They're all just sitting on top of that surface. And when it rains, the rainwater picks all those things up and it carries them right into our waterways. So, our beautiful Chattahoochee River is, it's just flowing into there. But the trees, what they do is they intake that water with all those pollutants into their roots. And they help lower the pollutants that are making it into our water. And the functional value for avoided runoff is about three-thousand-and-eighty dollars per year. And again, these are numbers that would grow with the planting of more trees. So, today, I've only discussed just a few environmental impacts that our urban canopy has to offer. And in reality, a tree's daily function and attributes are so much more. They include things like energy conservation, providing habitat. It's just so important to remember that the value of a tree is more than what you can see on the surface. Trees are a vital part of our healthy environment. And a healthy environment is a part of a thriving city.
Thank you, Rachel.
I promise, we're about done.
No, 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 you're fine.
I, I got, I came back up to the, the creative solution and partnerships because one of the things that, you know, you, you remember all the trees that needed removing and, and pruning in, in, in the park. And, uh, you know, this project is canopy restoration. It's not about just doing maintenance. It's about replacing the trees that are, that we're losing and making sure we have a canopy for future generations. And so, what we, one of the solutions to do in that, that will reduce that cost tremendously, is using the material on site. When you take down a tree, you know, we have the actual taking the tree down or the actual pruning, but then we have dealing with all the debris, hauling it off, paying for the landfills, dumping it, all those things. Well, sometimes that go, that cost goes as high as sixty percent of the actual tree removal or pruning cost. And so, at Lake Monal Park, we have plenty of places as we're trying to restore canopy that we can use that mulch that will provide a better growing environment for the trees. It'll help reduce the erosion that we're having in the creek. It'll, you know, it'll just help the, the, the whole general flow of the park. And it'll also reduce tree costs and tree maintenance over a long period of time because we're putting these trees in an environment where they like to grow and, and which is a more wooded type of environment. And so, we can create these environments and still leave plenty of openings for ball and, and, and all the other things that, that we want to do. And so, that's one of the things that we feel like this partnership, and we've talked to outside sources that are very involved, want to be involved in, in this park restoration project. So, I think it's a wonderful opportunity, if we can keep this partnership going, that, that we can use and meld pu- public and private interest together. And, and really and truly, it's a win-win for everybody. And, uh, that way, the city gets the greatest bang for their buck. So, with that, I'm going to hand it back to Ms. McDaniel.
Sure, sure. So, um, just to, to wrap up, again, um, we've got this long partnership with Urban Forestry. We've been partners with Urban Forestry and we are advocates for Urban Forestry. So, we, it is important for Trees Columbus to be able to say trees have got to be a priority. The city needs to be doing, um, what it's charged to do with our, with our urban trees. Um, we've got to continue this partnership because it works and it helps us find these creative solutions. It helps us bring in, um, some private funding. We have, we do, as George mentioned, we've got people who have said, we want to see this project going. I'm going to commit money to see this project going. They want to commit funding to make our urban forestry management better, to make it more efficient and to make it more creative. They said, now, I don't want to pay for doing something the city should already be doing. I want to pay to do it better, to do it more efficiently and to do it creatively. And so, um, I'm just thrilled that we've been able to have this partnership, um, that it has worked and that, um, we've got an opportunity to move it forward in a way that no other community, um, in our region has been able to do. So, we've taken a bit of your time, but this is, this is important stuff. And, um, if y'all have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Yeah, Counselor Huff.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you all for your presentations. Uh, I'm a tree lover. I played in trees as a kid. But they well know up here, I have a problem in my district. I need to know how this works as far as, we have trees that are not considered ready for removal. They are healthy oak trees that are destroying property all over the place. The root system is growing back toward the foundation of the homes. And no one's going to take account for this when it goes back. It's not going to be anybody's fault with the property owners. These homes have been there for years. They bade for the, one particular person, we started in two thousand and eleven, that's two thousand and twenty. She's eighty-plus years old now. Her husband's deceased, driveway's turned up. And the mayor and Counselor Thomas, the city manager, Counselor House, a lot of people have been to the meetings. They understand what's going on. So, what I need to know is how do we work through the tree canopy program to remove those trees and replace them with healthy trees? We're not against trees, we just need smaller trees. And trees that when they fall, they don't fall into the power lines and take all the power out.
That's right. And thank you for bringing that up because you teed it up perfectly. Um, and you brought this up at the December meeting too. It's been going on for a long time.
Long time.
And that is part of the beauty of this program is that it can address those issues. It can address a variety of issues. And George, you were nodding like you, you wanted to talk about this one specifically.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I've heard about, you know, a little bit about the situation, um, but have not been out there. And, and that's one of the things that I think that, uh, by having, continuing this partnership with Trees Columbus, you know, we can be more involved and look at possible solutions and look at the situation. Um, you know, it's really sort of, to start with, is to get a magnitude of what, you know, what are we talking about? I mean, I've, I've heard about a problem. I don't know if we're talking about one tree, two trees, five-hundred trees, you know, and so.
But let, but let's get together and ride. I'll ride with you. We'll, we'll ride together and talk about it.
You know, well, that's one of the things that, you know, like I said, we would like to be able to do. Um, I think that Trees Columbus can offer these types of things to the city if we can, you know, continue to keep the, the contract going and, and maintaining that relationship. But, you know, we'd be, I mean, we'd be more than happy to, you know, to be able to work with the city in, in, in doing that. And like I said, you know, we, we see things from a different perspective. I mean, they're, they're swamped with three-one-one calls. They're swamped with all kinds of other things every day. And it really does allow us to see things differently, um, and, and which is, can really be beneficial. But we'd love to, you know, we'd love to work with you on that.
Yeah. Because as I mentioned to Director, Director Begler, uh, in the number of trees that you remove each year, if we had just had fifty to seventy-five of ours removed, our problem would be gone. Bye-bye. So, we need, we need to really take a look at it. You know, I'll call you, you call me. We get together, take a tour.
Yeah.
See what's going on, see if we can work through it. Because it's, 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 when you take the tour, what you will see is, why is there not a tree? You'll ask, why is there not a tree right here? This is where a homeowner knew what the repercussions would be of that tree. And he took his chances and snatched it out of the ground and put it on the street and just said, well, if the city finds me, they find me. Those people, some of those have died and gone on, but they were correct. There's some of the ones that have the prettiest yards and the grass, no problems. They have planted a smaller tree in the yard.
Yeah.
So, they knew what they were looking at. Some were retired military that had worked in yards for years, years, had the prettiest yards in the neighborhood. But the problem now is for those of us who would like to have our yards returned to yesteryear, we've got to get something that we can work with. Uh, I had to, I tell people, if you pass my house, the upper end has good grass, the lower end does not. And the reason is, we had a situation of a storm years ago, before I was ever elected, uh, before two thousand and ten. And Georgia Powell came in to trim. And they rang the doorbell and I happened to be home. And they made the comment to me, we just want to let you know that we're here, working. My comment to him was, one day, I'll save up enough money so I can get those trees down and get my yard back. And he said to me, those three trees we can take down because they're in the power lines and they're causing us trouble. So, I have two left. I had five. They started with seven. And it's just too small a space for those trees.
Right.
Uh, so, don't ever get it wrong. Our neighborhood loves trees, the community, district as a whole. And my district runs from Pardo on this side, near Lake Bottom, all the way back over to Bennett Hills. So, we don't have a problem with the trees. We just need some type of management system to get those down and get the right trees in there. So, fifty years from now, we won't have this problem again.
Right, right.
Okay.
Absolutely.
That's a great example too of, of information that a tree inventory wouldn't give you. But if you have something like this focused management system, it lets you deal with some of those issues that are going to be different in different parts of the community.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Crabbe.
You know, we call this the Canopy Restoration Project. My concern is we're putting a lot of trees into the city. And then, the city has to maintain them. We don't get the help from Trees Columbus or something like that. And so, you're creating an atmosphere where it creates a budgetary process, problem for us in the future. I want, I don't want that to happen. So, I want us to be proactive in that. I don't, I, I don't, I would have a hard time approving us spending a lot of money and putting trees in if we can't come up with a, a program of maintaining these trees that is not going to shackle our budget coming in the futures.
And, you know, the point of this project and the reason we developed it in, in cooperation with Urban Forestry was not to create more work. It was to work more efficiently and to be more focused. So, the, the city, um, already has within the budget, the planting budget, the maintenance budget. And, and the number of trees planted varies by year and then they're, they're generally watered for a year. Um, Trees Columbus does some work on pruning young trees. Um, we don't do the watering. But again, this is about, um, being able to be more efficient with the job that they are currently charged with. Right? So, being able to plant more efficiently, maintain them more efficiently. Um, George, you want to add anything?
Well, you know, and I think what gets you is, oh, sorry. I've always got such a big mouth, I always forget to go to the microphone anyway. Uh, but what, what, what we don't realize is, I mean, we see these big numbers for maintenance. But you look at how much money we spend on cutting grass or, or, you know, maintaining the vehicle. The problem is, we, we neglect our tree maintenance until it gets to the point they get big numbers. We all know what happens if we don't change the oil in our car every three, five thousand mile. We're going to, you know, have engine problems later. We're going to, you know, have engine problems later on. And the problem is, is that we're just willy-nilly. Part of it is planting trees to where they're not necessarily where they should be. And then we're not maintaining them when they're young. And so they grow into problems. We're not, after we have storms, we can go in and take care of these problems. So if you look at maintenance of trees and you were to look at it on an annual basis, once you got proactive, the cost of it becomes very much in line, especially for all the benefits that the trees give you. I mean, you know, I, I don't think that anybody wants to live in a community without the trees. I mean, Rachel went through the benefits of what they do, all the things they do for. But it is a matter of putting them in the right spot in the right place and, and, you know, managing them from the very get-go. You know, one of the things that I hope that we can change over time is that we put a tree in the ground, we water it for a year. Why don't, why aren't we coming back in three years and do, you know how much cheaper it is to, to do some pruning on a three-year-old tree versus a sixty-year-old tree? It's a whole lot cheaper. And we can correct a lot of the problems that tree's going to have in the future by just doing it right from the, right from the get-go. And so, you know, that's a, you know, a big part of it. And, and, I mean, you're right, it can be very expensive. But it can be in line with every other, maintenance of every other asset.
All right. I think that, I think that's it. Guys, listen, thank you. From my perspective, I think it's absolutely critical that, that Trees Columbus remain an active and aggressive partner along with the City Columbus. The Canopy Restoration, I think if you polled everybody around here, everybody in the staff, they're going to tell you they think it's critical and it's important. But you were talking about failing to ma- maintain them and like with vehicle, we've got vehicles because of some deferred maintenance are in the same shape as some of those trees. So it, it is a balancing act, but that's why it's important for y'all to stay involved and, and keep us focused on, on that particular issue of it as well.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me just take the opportunity to thank Dorothy McDaniel and the Trees Columbus team. You want to tell us quickly who's with you?
One more time?
Who is with, who do you have with you?
Oh, absolutely. So in addition to George and, and Rachel, we have Candace Wayman who is with us. There's Candace. We actually just have two, well, three now, part-time employees at Trees Columbus. We have Tracy Spencer in the back who has been with Trees Columbus since the very beginning. We have James Dudley, who is one of our board members here today. And where's Rich? There's Rich. And actually Becca Zajak, who is, who used to be with Uptown. She's now with Dragonfly Trails. Becca came along with us today too, so.
Okay. Well, thank you for the partnership. Thank you to the Public Works team, Pat Beegler and her, her team. So thank you for coming today.
Well, we appreciate the opportunity.
Next, we will, I'm going to call Director John Hudgerson, Inspections and Codes for Demolition Update.
All right. All right. Just wanted to kind of give you all an update on the demolitions we've been performing across the city. We've got some before and after pictures and kind of where we stand monetarily and what, what progress we've been able to make. I would once again like to thank council and budget to provide our department with that million dollars. A lot of these properties, we would have not been able to go after had we not had that funding. So we definitely are appreciative. A lot of these properties, we've been hearing from owners for years and years and years, we just didn't have the financial ability to go after them or clear the sites and clear the properties. Just to explain it like I do every time is that once the city performs a demolition, the city does not take ownership of the property. We put a lien on the property and the property continues to sit there under the owner's control. So therefore, if we have to come back now that the property's been torn down and the house is gone, we do still may have to go back and cut the grass if they're once again being non-compliant. So it doesn't mean that we tear it down and the city now owns that parcel of that piece of land. We're just clearing the nuisance. We're getting rid of the burned building. We're getting rid of that structure. And then we're moving on to the next case. This is kind of a timeline since the budget year of what we've done so far. You can see there the lot clearing started July 31st at 4325 Oak Acida Road, which was Grand Oak Estates. Then we came here the next month in August 13th for the first reading for 21 houses for demolition. Ended up being seventeen for those. The owners did come in and, and get permits and tear down their own structures. So we have a few of those that were taken care of without the city having to get involved or spend any city, city funds. After that point, we started on, we finished the work September 7th on Oak Acida Road. So that property is complete for the moment. We're going back to grass a lot of these properties. We had to clear them first to get all the stuff out of there. We've got some other contractual issues on that property dealing with some other issues. But we're moving forward with getting that lot cleared and grassed. Then we started 988 Far Road, September the 13th of 2019. As this was going on and a new owner came in and purchased that property. Because a lot of people ask, why did you guys start there but you didn't finish? So that's where we are there. We're giving them an opportunity to come in and do what they need to do because the new owner has come in. So if we could not use that money and put it towards six or seven new other houses, I'd prefer to do that than, than let them. So we're trying to give them the opportunity to come in and clear it themselves. So we started kind of halfway because you can kind of see the front, but if you keep riding around Far Road, you kind of see a couple of trailers back in here and you're like, well, what happened? But that's where that is. We're, we're in negotiations with that owner to figure out what their next steps are. For, then we started the demolition. We brought in October the ten additional houses, which we, we haven't started on yet. We started the lot clearing on, on the Far Road property back on October the 9th and we finished that work December the 9th. So just kind of want to give you guys, the rest of this is honestly just pictures, just to show you guys the, the before and after what we've done with the properties that we've cleared. So that's some properties from Grand Oak Estates before and now the property's cleared. Like I said, we've got to come back and do some grassing and some grading, but right now we just wanted to get that nuisance, get those materials and get them off the site. Once again, 527 Far Road, Fort Bennett Estates, and now that lot is cleared. Those, those trailers aren't there, that debris, the material, those things aren't there. Kind of before and afters, some properties, we've kind of been moving from west to east. So this is kind of sections that are in the west districts, council districts, and the other set of ten that are coming. It'll be more on the, on the east side of town. So this is before and after photos of these properties. So once we come in, we clear the whole site. Everything's clear from the front to back. Driveway's pulled up. Everything's gone. So it is just a lot. It's not, so to kind of dissuade people from trying to pull up cars and pull things up and do something else in, in the lot. So we try to just clear them. And like I said, with the houses residential, we go back immediately and grass and seed because it's a smaller lot. It's a lot easier to get to. We're not worried about rain conditions, things like that. So typically those, we had two of those right side by side and we took both of those out at the same time. This one's across from Fox Elementary. A lot of these properties, that's where we hear, once again, we hear from the citizens. They tell us these complaints of these properties, but typically we go and look at the cost of clearing this property properly with asbestos removal, lead removal, things like that. And the costs can get kind of, kind of pricey. You can't even see that house because it, the trees had overgrown and things had taken it over on Fourth Avenue. 24 Mason, we did two on twenty, on Mason. We did one on 24 and we did one on 34. We were able to get into both properties, get them cleared. Like I said, these properties have been there since 2014, 2015, or longer. So a lot of these properties were just in disarray. You can see the door open right there. We actually got a personal, actually somebody owns a personal care home right across the street from there. So I would hear calls from them all the time about, what are you doing? What are you doing? And so it was good that we were able to finally take care of some of these problems. Lumpkin Court. Get a lot of burned-out structures. And like I said, that's ideally a lot of our, our, our first priority properties are burned-out structures, are structural failing properties, and those are the ones we try to take care of first. I think Counselor Thomas would be happy about this one over on 26th. We took care of a lot of these properties that, you know, we, we knew that they were problems. And like I said, we just didn't have the financial ability to be able to spread out and get as many as we wanted to at one time. So 28th Street, right around the corner. Like I said, a lot of these have just been taken over. It's on Matthew Street, back off of Victory Drive. It's just, a lot of these things have just been taken over. Nobody's been there. Nobody's taken care of them. We've sent notices and things and just hadn't gotten anything back. It's another one, just structural failure, just, you know, it's been abandoned. Lincoln Street, that one looks nice. Unfortunately, the whole side of it's missing. That's just the front shaft from the street. So that one looks a lot better. And, and that's why I took this one specifically because this is around the corner. If you saw the front of that house, you'd ride by and think nothing's wrong with it. But they're actually, during the storm, a tree fell through it, damaged it, and then they just had thrown tarps on it and left it be. And it sat there for almost a year. So we were able to get in and clear a lot of these properties. Another burned structure. Another burned structure. I said a lot of these, that's what they are. So this is kind of our numerical total. I say estimated at the bottom. We, the intent was to try to kind of let all of our, make sure our invoices are cleared and everything's been paid for, before we come back again. The intent is to come back in April or March or April with another set of homes. We're just trying to get the trailer parts done and this first set of houses completed before we come back to council. As you can see, the cost of the lot clearings and the demolitions there altogether, out of the million dollars, it's almost eight hundred and fifty thousand that's been spent. A lot of these things we wouldn't have been able to do, like that Far Road, you can see that one was 229 on its own. Even the Far Road, the work that we did, the half of the work that we did do on, on Far Road, that's, you know, ninety-four thousand. That's two times my budget normally for demolitions. So to be able to have that money, we, we definitely are making a difference. And if you talk to any of those neighbors right next door, they, they definitely are appreciative. We did tell, you know, when I came before, I said, you know, if I had the money to tear everything down, it'd be three million dollars. So I'm, now I'm hearing from those other neighbors, well, what about mine? And we're, we're, like I said, we're trying to focus on the fire structures, the burn structures. We've got a few that we're, we're trying to work with the owners, but a lot of these people unfortunately deceased. You know, Nexican is not here. We're trying to track them down and do what we can to. And unfortunately, because of this initiative, some people have come in and started to do their own demolitions. Because they're like, oh, they see that the city's serious about this and the city's going to end up taking it in their own hands. So we've had at least a, a uptick in demolitions in my office because people are like, well, I don't want the city to put this lien on my property. I'm going to go and do it myself. I do have a, if we do the Code Case Dashboard, which we have online, which is maintained every week, you can keep tabs on this. If, you know, if you want to know where exactly we stand, you'll see the red, if you see a red tag over the property that's on the demo list, that means that we are, this is one that we've already got authorized from council to do and we're moving forward with it. So people do know where we stand. I have a little information on Tank Farm demolition, just because I've been doing demolitions all over the place. So we kind of tagged this on the back of this presentation, just to kind of give everyone an update of the 22 tanks and four art parcel, uh, four different properties, the structures we have out there. As of today, they've all been cleared. They've got to come down and do some, uh, they've got to come down and do some foundation work. But the, the above-ground structures, if you ride by there, I think there's maybe that kind of tank in that top right picture there is really the only tank that's left. Everything else, surface above ground has been cleared. And then they'll be coming in to start doing a lot of the foundation work. So this picture was taken yesterday. So you can see that little tank there, but everything out from the Tank Farm has been, has been cleared. Any questions?
Doesn't appear to be any. John, I tell you what, man, that, that's a great, great job. And, and you know, the significant thing about it is that it shows the foresight of this council. That's a lot of money to, to, to commit to, to removing blight and structures that are detracting from this community. And I tell you, the challenge is going to be not to, not to take a step back. So we'll, we'll likely see another aggressive move to try to continue the work that you're doing, at least to get you caught up. And, and, and council will have an opportunity to deliberate those funds as well. But thank you and your team for what y'all done.
Thank you.
He has been really happy with that million dollars, man.
Well, I, if I meet anybody that's not happy with a million dollars. But, no, but you've used it, you've used it well though. That's, that's awesome.
Mayor and Council, I've got a Virginia College update. I'm going to call on Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge. In fact, she's going to be, follow the Virginia College update with the Government Center Capital Projects update. Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This is just to give you an update on where we're at with the Virginia College Building Acquisition and to provide some information. We're not requesting action today from council as we're still in our due diligence period. But just wanted to provide you an update on the progress that we've made on that facility. Just as a reminder, this, the Public Health Department, the city is required to provide them space. Their current location is at 2100 Comer Avenue. They occupy about 80,000 square feet between the Health Department and the district offices under the Public Health Department. They do share that space with the district office for West Central Health District, as well as DFAX and New Horizons. All three of those are located in that facility at 2100 Comer Avenue. That bid, building was originally owned by the Medical Center Hospital Authority through Columbus Regional Healthcare. Was recently purchased in 2016 by Family Holdings. Our current rent payment is $321,000. That is a general fund expenditure for the rent. That's made up of two components. It's base rent, which is a price per square footage. And then there also assessed a portion of what they call common area charges, which would include janitorials, security, maintenance, property management, taxes, all those things associated with the building. So their rent that we pay on behalf of the Health Department is really made up of two components. The current lease expires at the end of June of 2020. The lease payment is expected to increase. The information that was provided to the Health Department gave them a range. I do think that the landlord came back and went with something closer to the six dollar. But that would increase our obligation to around the $482,000 amount in addition to common area charges. So the timeline that we've been working under, the city did meet with the Health Department back in 2018 and 2019 when they were notified by the landlord to anticipate a rate increase. They were provided a market study, not until October of 2019. But during that time, we were really looking for a facility that would accommodate the Health Department and the ancillary functions of the Health Department. We came to council with a discussion in November 5th. We received council's approval in November the 12th to consider purchasing 5601 Veterans Parkway, which is the Virginia College Building. We did make an offer at two and a half million dollars that was accepted on November the 14th. Contracts were signed on November 20th and we are currently in our due diligence period. What does that mean? We are looking at the space allocation. We are assessing the building and the building systems. We are compiling renovation costs. That's part of the process of moving the Health Department is to not only look at the space, but how much will it cost in order for them to occupy that space and also the public transportation requirements. So those things are all being considered during this time period as we're moving forward with relocating the Health Department to that facility on Veteran, North Veterans Parkway. Again, the building is just over 70,000 square feet. It's on 7.2 acres. For those of you who do not know, it's located on North Veterans Parkway at Whitesville Road, just south of the Walgreens. It was built in 1975. It was renovated in 2011 for Virginia College. They had it listed at 3.2 million. Our offer was 2.5. And we have estimated renovation costs at 2.5 as we're working through this process. The annual debt service payments on the bonds that were issued for $5 million is about 310,000 per year. This is at a 2.07% interest rate, which is a fabulous interest rate from one of our local banks. Sanovus actually won the bid for those bonds. The services that we're, as we're moving forward with looking at the space allocation, working with the architect. And just to touch on the architect and how they were selected, council has authorized us through an annual contract to have five architects under what we call annual contract, which is to utilize on an as-needed basis. So we have selected one of those architects. They've already been vetted through an RFP process and we are allowed to utilize any of the architects that are on annual contracts. So we have selected Barnes Gibson Architects to work with us on the space allocation. They presented to us a, what's called a design-build model, which would be, they would select the contractor. We've utilized this model on two other occasions. We've utilized this model on two other occasions that I'm aware of, which would have been Comer Gym and one of the fire stations that caught fire. We use this type of model when it's a time-sensitive project. With this project is definitely time-sensitive as we're working for, towards this June 30th, 2020 date. We have not executed a contract with Barnes Gibson at this point, because we'll bring that back to council for authorization. Even though this annual contract RFP that we did would allow us to move forward, we actually want council's ratification on this particular project because it is a large project, small relative to other projects, but a large enough and, and a lot of discussion about this project. We want to make sure that council is aware of what we're moving forward with.
All right, excuse me. Second, Deputy City Manager, Councilor Garrett.
Ms. Assistant City Manager, I got a couple of questions. What's the last date of the due diligence period?
It's sometime in March. I don't know the specific date, but it is sometime in March.
And I understand that there's an architect that's, or architects are going to get involved. But are we going to have some actual costs from contractors that are going to go in and actually look at these costs before the due diligence period expires?
Yes, they are in the process of doing that now. The architect has selected a contractor to partner with.
Okay.
And that is part of what they've been doing over these last several weeks, is looking at, they've had their subs in there, looking at the building, looking at the building systems, just to make sure there's no red flags that they see with the facility, as well as helping us with the estimated renovation costs.
Okay. If there's any way they can give us that information, I think we would need that at least a couple of means in advance of the, into the due diligence period for us to be able to make an educated decision.
Well, let me just say that we anticipate having the numbers prior to the fourth Tuesday council meeting.
Okay.
And we are going to be bringing those numbers to you at that meeting. And we are going to want your vote to proceed at that meeting so that we can go ahead and close on the property early February, so that we can start the process that we will have this done prior to the June 30th date, which is when our current lease agreement expires, so that July 1st, we can be operating in a new building.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor House.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Hodge, who's paying the rent for those services that are staying at Comer Avenue? Is that the state, then?
That would be the state, or they do also have some grants that they receive through the Health Department that would be responsible for those.
It's not us?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Thomas.
Mr. City Manager, did I understand you to say that you're going to bring us the numbers for the building and, and want us to vote at the same meeting?
That's correct.
I really would like to have this information before that in order to do my due diligence. I, I think it's not responsible for me to vote in the same meeting in which I get the, I first see the, the numbers. And, and if that's what comes before us, I will be making the motion that we not do it. Because I, I, we need to have a chance to take a look at this.
Yeah, I think some of the number, the key numbers are already being given to us. I think when you really look at, the question comes, if the renovation costs and things like that go in excess, then certainly the numbers are going to change. But when you really look at the numbers and being what's compared, what's being offered and all, it's, you being able to do something at a discount, if anything, the city winds up making, making money in this situation where before you just pay it out and you get nothing. Now, the, the other side of this is though you got a, you got value. You know, you got two point five million, maybe three million dollars of value there that will always be there that you get back. And so when you start adding it up over ten, fifteen, twenty years, you know, you, you have the ability to get all your money back and then make money. I mean, what a deal for the taxpayers. The other side of it is you just continue paying rent. At these prices or higher subject prices for twenty years, now you're talking eight, nine, ten, fifteen plus million dollars in twenty years of taxpayers' money that's gone. I mean, it's, well, I, you know, when you, if you want to talk about the numbers, that's what you got to really focus on. But like I said, I mean, it's, it's, the questions are very valid, or the question is very valid when it comes to how much are the renovation cost, and what is it going to cost from that standpoint. I think as far as maintenance, I think all that is covered. You've got to discount it. You're actually providing a building for less than what's being paid currently at the other facility. So I think you can cover all those costs, and then the city has the ability. A lot of those costs are covered within the city facilities. We have a maintenance department. We have public services. We have labor aspect to landscaping and doing all that kind of stuff. So, you know, I, well, I think those are just some key things to focus on when it comes to the, to the key numbers that you got to look at.
Well, and certainly, we know the numbers. We have all the numbers. And, and we are happy to provide any additional information. I think the Deputy City Manager has just shared some numbers that the three dollars and seventy-six cents, we spend in excess of, we're spending right at four million dollars. Because we pay the three hundred and twenty-one dollars annual rent, and then, not in the last year, we didn't, at the property tax that's added on top of that to it, it would be roughly about three hundred and eighty-nine million dollars. And then at the proposed six dollar rate, we're looking at four hundred and eighty-two thousand in rent, in addition to the common area charge. And so you're looking in excess of a half million dollars. And she just showed you at the two point oh seven percent interest rate, we're at three hundred and ten thousand dollars. And we've calculated all of the operational expense for that building. And with the operational expense of that building, we're still not close to what we pay out in the lease. And, and we can lay it all out on the table. And, and we're very happy to do that.
I think, I think the one, and I apologize for interrupting, but I think the one question that, that, that we, we will try to get an answer to is when, when the numbers come in on what it's going to cost for the renovation, I think if, if we get them, we can share them with council.
Sure.
And then, and then the discussion, because it is going to be critical. If we, if we get them, and we should get them ahead of time, go ahead and get them to council so they can do their due diligence. Because it's going to come down to, you know, and we've, we've talked about this on the front end. If it, hopefully it's going to come in right on budget. But if there's some enhancements that are options that we could, it does go a little higher, you know, unless, I don't know what that number is. That's for council to decide. But at some point, it would be too much to see it go to. But it's still, it, it, it's still a prudent way. I think council decided that on the front, on the front end. But we can get that done. That way, we can get the vote done on the 20, 28th because it is going to be critical to get that started so that we can get moved in there. Otherwise, we've got a real dilemma on our hands.
And, and we can certainly do that. And we can get that information out to council as soon as we get it.
Right.
And, and then we can make ourselves available to answer any questions. And then we can bring it on the 28th and have further discussion. But we would be looking for a vote. And, and I'll just say, you know, my goal in all of this has been to make sure that we take care of those in need of service through the Health Department. That's first. And, and once we make sure that we've got a one-stop shop, we've got shuttle service to the four miles difference in travel, the shuttle service would be free to get them there. And when we've taken care of a one-stop shop and, and make sure that it's accessible to those using the service, then in my mind, it comes down to at least my fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers, to present something to the mayor and council that is, is not an undue expense to the taxpayers. And when I look at the numbers, I'm, I can sleep well at night knowing that that's exactly what I'm doing. And all you got to do is calculate the numbers out, as Councilor Davis has said. We can calculate them out from the, the time that we went into that building and started paying rent through the current contract. And we can see what we've paid out. And then if we calculate the new adjusted rate in the lease for the next twenty years, we can see what we would pay out. And then it's simple to see what we're getting a two point oh seven percent interest rate at, and calculate that out, plus what it's going to cost for maintenance. And there's the difference. And so what I'm trying to present is a win-win for the constituent, those who are going to use the service, and for the taxpayers who are going to pay for it. And if we can get those in it's, then I've done my job.
Councilor Thomas.
I'm sorry.
And all I'm asking you to do is to give me those figures before
Sure.
the meeting at which you expect me to vote to approve them. I don't know how much it's going to cost for maintenance. I don't know how much it's going to cost for renovation because you haven't given me those figures. That's all I'm asking for.
Sure.
I know the figures that Councilor Davis was talking about. I've read all of that stuff. I'm just saying, if you're expecting me to make a decision on that kind of money so that we can provide the best service available to the citizens of Columbus, give it to me before five minutes before you want me to vote on it. That's all I'm asking.
We'll do that. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Sure. So just from a service standpoint, we wanted to make sure that we outline what would move to the Virginia College 5601 Veterans Parkway, and what would remain at Comer Avenue. I've passed out kind of a flyer brochure that was provided by the Health Department. It's double-sided. These are the services that they provide, which would all be relocated so that all of the services will remain in one area. That would be clinical and educational services, including vital records, immunization, the WIC Office, clinical services, those services that are provided to students and schools, teen health, children's first, women's health, would all be relocated to the Veterans Parkway. Those items that would remain at the Comer facility would be residential and business services, septic tank, swimming pool, public swimming pools, tattoo artists, well water sampling, tourist accommodation, restaurants, vector control. These do not have typically public traffic and are not considered clinical services, but are the also services performed under the umbrella of the Health Department, as well as the emergency preparedness office. And then district administration would remain at the Comer Avenue office. Just some pictures of the inside of the Virginia College Building for those who have not visited this facility. It's in really good condition, was renovated, as we said, in 2011. And just to show you exactly where it's located, just south of Whitesville Road, there at the corner of Veterans Parkway. We have had a lot of questions about the Metro Transit Service. And as the city manager stated, there will be a shuttle provided. There is a current service, thirty-three trips per day, either within walking distance of this location or directly in front of the location. There is thirty-three trips per day. The proposed service would then also include a free, and I should have put free on there, free daily shuttle between the Metro Transfer Station, twenty-one hundred Comer Avenue, and the Veterans Parkway. So that will also be provided to citizens to make sure that they have access to the services from the Health Department. And that's just an update of where we are. And as the city manager mentioned, we plan to get the renovation costs, exactly the floor plan, as we've been working through with the architect, how that will be arranged. We want to share that with council and the public so that they know when they come to the building where those offices will be located. And we'll get that to you in advance of the meeting on the 28th. And we obviously want to move forward so that we can meet the timeline that we're under of the June 30th date for the Health Department. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Doesn't appear to be anymore.
Okay. So just moving on to the Government Center, the Capital Projects input date, to just let you know where we're at in that particular process. Again, just to show you the SPOSS timeline that we're working under. We're still in the, the very left-hand side of this timeline. We did hold the first series of public meetings. We've also had an online survey, which I'll go through briefly as we move forward for second round of public meetings, and providing information back to the public on what we heard from them, and working towards that proposed list of projects to be presented to council in July for the call for election in August. And the SPOSS ballot would be November 3rd of 2020, with the collection beginning April 1 of 2021. This was our planning process timeline. We've had one adjustment, so I've also provided a revised timeline. We anticipated having the CM@Risk contract to council in January. We are continuing with that interview process to make sure that we bring forward our recommendation for the CM@Risk. So the only change is that we'll move to the first meeting in February, as opposed to the fourth Tuesday in January for the CM@Risk contract. But other than that, we're moving forward working with the architects and the design team that was selected back in October or November. Current status of the Capital Projects survey, as I reported to you, we had thirty-one surveys that we received from the public meetings. We held public meetings at each one of the council districts in October and November. We received thirty-one of those completed surveys. So we came back and wanted to make sure we got a more representative response to that survey. So we put it out online. We've received seven hundred and sixty-four since we've put it out online. We have, you know, kind of put it out again to make sure that folks know that the January 15th would be the end of the initial survey. As we come back, we'll probably do another one. I think the fact that we've received so much response through the online process, through our website and Facebook pages, and everyone sharing that information, we'll try to utilize this particular option in the future on additional surveys. I think we did see more input from citizens on that. And I will come back at the next meeting and give you kind of the results of that survey as we finish that up. As far as the process, the consultants have been conducting sessions with government center personnel. I think they've met with every office, agency, department that's in that building or could be in that building related to a space needs assessment. They have a, a form that they've required each area to fill out, talking about what they currently have. They've done walkthroughs of all of those areas to make sure as they're planning for the space in a new facility or renovation of the existing facility, that they have a complete understanding of all of the offices and functions and who needs to be next to who. So they've had interviews with all of those offices. They will be coming back with recommendations for office space standards. Those are being developed. So that just means how much square footage does, does each type of physician, are they entitled to? We want to make sure that council agrees with those standards that we're recommending, so that a judge, the city manager, the mayor, or a department head, you know, a district attorney, someone works in the district attorney's office, we're going to have space standards. standards. So as they're putting this plan together, that everyone is on the same page with what those standards are in order to allocate square footage. They're also evaluating, they'll be in town again next week, to evaluate the existing government center in order to continue to look at the option of renovating the existing building. So we are moving forward with evaluating all of the options that council has approved to date so that we can meet the timeline that we had proposed to council when we started this process. And I'll be happy to answer any questions about the government center. I will also say that on the life safety improvements, we are moving forward with that process on the existing government center, and we'll come back at the next meeting with kinda where we're at in that. We've almost to the point where they've completed the design work for the new fire alarm system in that building. And just to give you an update on the plan, moving that forward, and also related to the sprinkle sprinkling of that building and the stairwell pressurization. So we'll come back with an update at the next meeting specifically on the life safety improvements.
Very good. Doesn't appear to be any questions.
Mayor, that concludes my agenda.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. For the Clerk's agenda, item number one is a resolution to excuse.
Motion to approve the resolution excusing Counselor Barnes. There is a second. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That passes.
Item two is an email correspondence from Carol Bassett, resigning from her seat on the Animal Control Advisory Board.
Is the motion received with regrets? Is the motion received with regrets on item two? There's a second. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That is confirmed.
Item number three is a letter of resignation from Mr. Warren Wagner from his position on the Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission.
Motion second received with regrets. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? That is approved.
Item number four, we received an email correspondence from the Human Resources Department. They are recommending that Holly Browder fill the unexpired term of Laura Johnson, who is no longer an employee.
So we make a motion and then a motion to confirm?
Yes, motion to confirm.
Okay, so there's a motion to confirm, and there's a second. Any discussion? All in favor of Ms. Browder, say aye. Any opposed? She's confirmed.
Minutes of various boards.
Motion has a second received, the minutes. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? They are received.
Next, our board appointments. Mr. Mayor, we have the Commission on International Relations and Cultural Liaison and Encounters, the seat of Shanae Goodwin-Wittlesley.
So the seat was Ms. Wittlesley?
Yes.
Because you, you know, you gave me a name of somebody who's interested.
Akir Mueborn.
Let's go ahead, and that's from YP. Let's go ahead and nominate him.
I'm sorry.
Let's go ahead and nominate. Nominate him.
And that was Akir Mueborn.
Right. I'll let you pronounce it.
Thank you.
It's motion second to confirm. All in favor, say aye.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, who made the second?
All in favor? Any opposed?
Next, we have Convention and Visitors Board of Commissioners, the seat of Paul Pierce. We also have the Pension Fund Employees Board of Trustees. For council appointments that are ready for vote, on the tree board, Tanis Daly was nominated to succeed William Consoletti. She may be confirmed.
Motion second to confirm. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? She's confirmed.
Next, we have appointments for council confirmation on the Animal Control Advisory Board. Ms. Patricia Montgomery is currently the CEO of Paul's Humane Society. She will be replacing Bobby Yeo. Does the council wanna make this confirmation?
Motion second to confirm Ms. Montgomery. Any, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Ms. Montgomery, just confirm.
Also, for the seat of Dr. Carrie Riddick, we've received Dr. Jean Wa-Gusback. This is also council's confirmation.
Motion second to confirm Dr. Jean. Any, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, they're confirmed.
Next, we have council appointments that are ready for vote tabulation. For the Airport Commission, we have the seat of Carl Rhodes Jr. So we have, did you wanna just move confirmation? Okay.
There's a, was there a motion to confirm?
Yes.
Okay, motion is second to confirm Mr. Rhodes. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Rhodes is confirmed.
Next, we have the Board of Elections and Registration. We have the seat, first, we have the seat of Margaret Jenkins. For this one, we have Margaret Jenkins and Harry C. Underwood. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, one more time.
Councilor Barnes is withdrawing his nominee of Harry Underwood. Therefore, if the council wanted to confirm Margaret Jenkins, they may do so.
Motion second to confirm Ms. Jenkins. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? She's confirmed.
Next, we have the seat of Ms. Diane Scrimpshire.
All right, and there is another nominee as well, Raquel Aponte, but there's a motion to confirm Ms. Scrimpshire, so, and a second. So all in favor, please say aye. I didn't think it was correct. I was wondering why we're doing. So you have to vote on them? Okay.
Do we want to do a roll call vote for this one, for Ms. Diane Scrimpshire?
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Allen.
Scrimpshire.
Barnes.
Scrimpshire.
Crab.
Scrimpshire.
Davis.
Scrimpshire.
Garrett.
Scrimpshire.
House.
Scrimpshire.
Huff.
Scrimpshire.
Thomas.
Scrimpshire.
Thompson.
Scrimpshire.
Ms. Scrimpshire has eight, nine, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
She may be confirmed.
Motion second to confirm, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, she's confirmed.
Next, we have the seat of Eleanor White. We received the nomination of Nate Sanderson. This is Mayor Protem's nominee. Council Barnes has nominated.
I'm with George James Washington Jr.
Okay. So that will leave.
Yeah. Counselor Allen.
Thank you, sir. I talked to Nate Sanderson yesterday and explained to him about the tenor we're in and how we're feeling. Council is leaning towards renominating because of the election, new process, and all the intricacies of that. And he agreed. He said he had heard that, and he agreed that council should go forward with that. So in that light, I am going to cast my vote for Eleanor White.
Okay. Do we need to do a roll call, or?
We do.
Yes, we do.
Okay. Well, okay, so we still have Nate Sanderson.
Yep.
Okay, and Eleanor White. Mr. Washington has been removed. Counselor Allen.
Eleanor White.
Barnes.
White.
Crab.
White.
Davis.
Ms. White.
Garrett.
Ms. White.
House.
White.
Huff.
White.
Thomas.
White.
Thompson.
White.
Ms. White has nine. She may be confirmed.
Motion second to confirm Ms. White. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? She's confirmed.
Next, we have council appointments. Any nominations will be listed for the next meeting for the Commission on International Relations and Cultural Liaison and Encounters. We have one seat that's open for nomination. For the Personnel Review Board, we have three seats that are open for nomination. We have one regular member and two alternate members. We did receive a nominee form for Ms. Monell, who is interested in serving in the regular member seat of Mr. Charles Harp. Next, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Has Ms. Monell, who expressed interest in serving, has she been an alternate?
She has not been an alternate. She would be a very new, a new member.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. We have upcoming board appointments for the Board of Zoning Appeals, Building Authority of Columbus, Civic Center Advisory Board, Circle, Community Development Advisory Council, and the Planning Advisory Commission. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. We do have a request to go into executive session, but first, we've got some individuals that wanted their extra three minutes. I think Mr. Helmick is here.
Thank you so much for waiting. I apologize for the confusion. Absolutely. Well, I thank the council for the additional time. I'm gonna stick here close to my clock and try and be as quick as I can.
Okay.
As far as an update, I have received word from the state court that the case that we were talking about, that Counselor Huff asked about, would be dismissed upon payment of court costs. So that should happen within the next several days, and that would undo the second ordinance issue that caused the non-renewal. So I think that takes care of that point. My second, my second argument that I was gonna make is that there shouldn't have been any non-renewal in the first place because the, this was done because Mr. Philip had had two of these ordinance issues, and the ordinance that caused the non-renewal says if you have two involving alcohol, or drugs, or prostitution, or pimping, or sodomy, if you have two, then you can't have the renewal. Obviously, that language does not apply to someone who has a liquor license and who has not been charged for any alcohol issue themselves, like Mr. Philip. If he had a DUI or sold alcohol to a minor, we'd be having a different conversation, but there's no dispute that he himself did not have any issue with alcohol for that ordinance issue. So we shouldn't be here in the first place on that. So we're asking for, for renewal, that Mr. Philip be able to renew his license for this year, for 2020, for the liquor license. There has been some mention of an audit I should mention as well. I'm not sure to what degree that's before council. It's only been something that's been discussed in the past, and we understand that we might have to take up an audit issue. Like I said earlier, we've been running, Aiden has been running only a little bit more than a year, okay? So these are issues that are not always clear to business owners, sometimes not even to lawyers and judges. And so we certainly appreciate in advance the time to work through, hopefully work through any audit issues, should any come up. Like I said, it's unclear to me what all that is, but again, we are asking the council for permission to renew the liquor license so we can stay up and running and continue that growth in the downtown industry. We appreciate the time, and we'll certainly be happy to answer any questions that council may have.
All right, city attorney.
Mayor, let me, I've asked the clerk to enter into the record the order to refund from McCourts Court dated January the 8th concerning his appeal of a case from 2019. This order to refund the costs and to consider the case now docketed as pending in state court does remove one of the issues that Mr. Helmick has discussed. I would ask the clerk to enter that in the record along with this, Ms. Davis, the October 2nd disposition form. If you'll keep those two in the record. And if you need to correct a case number on one of those, that's fine, just submit it to Ms. Davis. But in light of this new evidence that Finance Department did not have before today, I think they can recommend a temporary renewal of the license for 90 days pending a food versus alcohol sales audit. Now, they can come up and speak for themselves and comment on this, but I think that's what they're prepared to recommend. Ms. Ivy or Ms. Alexander, y'all wanna comment?
Good afternoon. We agree with the recommendation that has been brought forth as stated by the city attorney. The only thing that I like to just sort of make mention of and make clear is, you know, our office, we're responsible for conducting these audits and, you know, maintaining, I myself as a signer on these business licenses, as well as these alcoholic beverage licenses. And I just wanna state very clearly that we are not trying to put Aiden Lounge out of business. They have a business license to operate as a restaurant, and he can continue to operate today as a restaurant, just serving non-alcoholic beverages, you know, if council does not agree or approve the temporary renewal of his alcoholic beverage license.
In addition to that, I'll say that, and I know Counselor Allen remembers this, the struggle in 97, 98 to recraft the alcoholic beverage code because it had been manipulated and changed so many times over the years. There were like 90-something changes? 132 changes. So, so you're right, our objective is not to put anybody out of business, but it is our objective to hold them accountable to be, be the type of establishment that they say they will be on that license. So you're correct, he could continue to function, and it shouldn't really hurt his business if he's a restaurant. And we, but I think it's probably a pretty good compromise to allow him a temporary renewal, at least until that audit is completed on his first year in business. But I thank Yvonne and, and, and the Finance Director for, for watching this, because it is a very, very important piece of the licensing business.
Mayor, we would ask for a council vote on the temporary renewal not to exceed 90 days, which would extend until April the 14th.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes. And I would also like to add, Mayor, that an ABC violation of conviction is alcohol-related. The only way that you would need an ABC card is if you work in an establishment that requires that is engaging in alcohol sales and transactions. So that is alcohol-related. Therefore, it should stand as thus.
And we have, we've dealt with this before, but isn't the owner or the manager responsible for making sure that those ABC cards of the employees are maintained?
That is correct. Yes, sir, and it's codified in the ordinance as such, too.
And we didn't have to get into that because I knew there was gonna be a compromise.
Yes, sir.
But I think that would be a very interesting point to argue for Mr. Helmick, but frankly, the owner is held accountable for those ABC cards.
And I didn't get into that either because the individual that caused it didn't work for us, so I don't wanna go down that.
Okay. Yeah, you might wanna quit while you're ahead.
Yeah, exactly.
Counselor Barnes?
I just wanna tell you, Yvonne, you always do a good job. And I appreciate you. No, 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 I do. I've called you in different hours on different things. You always get back with me, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Helmick.
Appreciate your patience. I really do, because I know it's been a long day.
They need to vote.
Oh, we need to vote. We got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, it's temporarily renewed for another 90 days.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank y'all. All right, I'm sorry, Ms. Powell Moore, I think up next was Mr., no, ma'am, you were the last one on the list. I think Mr. Goodman is up, up next, if he had any further remarks. Thank you, though. Just trying to stay in order so I don't.
I just wanna say thank you all for hearing me out this morning, but we have a speeding problem on Armada Avenue. The high school is down there, kids back in school, kids walking home. People just don't care. Can we get some help at least two days a week to set up when school's going on?
Well, I think council will tell you they believe, and you can tell from their comments, that when you call in something that is, is wrong with the city streets, you don't care whose responsibility it is, you just expect it to get fixed, and so do we. So we, so we appreciate you bringing it to our attention. We'll follow up.
The speeding issue.
Oh, I thought you were talking about the.
No, no, no.
Okay.
I'm talking about speeding.
I was speeding we don't care about. No, I'm just kidding. Yeah, we can get that done. I'm sorry, we'll work on that. done, I'm sorry, we'll, we'll work on that, too.
You know, kids walking home from school every day, people walking their dog, and my wife, almost twice pouring out of the apartment complex, so, you know, one day a week, two days a week, if somebody set up.
And the police department is, is understaffed right now, so it's, they've been using some of the motor squad to, to help with the patrols, but we can put some of them out there to make sure, just to slow it down, we'll pass it on to the chief. All right, Ms. Palmore, Mrs. Palmore, I'm sorry.
Could you correct me on the next time I'll be here, that on the March, after March, the MSMR, that's in order?
We got it.
I'm sure by then. Hello, I'm once again Audrey Palmore, 1035 Lower Slaney's my address, and I want to emphasize that right now it is 1:30, so I'll be able to speak at least until 1:34. My main purpose for continuing to come is because of the fact that the division of Columbus Parks and Rec, they did not honor a request that we had out at one of the parks in 2018, and I'm a firm believer that children need to have good experiences, okay, this was a family event that was applied for at the beginning of March in 2018, but it was not carried out to the fullest extent, whereas we did not have any facilities to release our waste, and I know that my one-year-old was in a diaper, but there were people at the event, from the age of one-year-old to 80-years-old, came from out of town, they had all kinds of physical ailments, and this could lead, because of the fact that we were told without a doubt that we would have facilities to release waste, because they knew when we applied, that there was going to be food served for the event that was honoring our one-year-old, so we don't want our one-year-old to get older and look at the fact that, hey, no one spoke about the fact that they didn't have a restroom at my honor, you know, my honoring of being here, and so we don't want Columbus, Georgia, to be known by others outside of Columbus, Georgia, that they don't honor what they say in a contract, especially having a facility to release waste, and so it is very important that this body gives a motion that I be allowed to be heard and shown information to the risk manager of Columbus, who was the risk manager in 2018, 2019, and now we're going into 2020, so by March the 14th, which is at least 60 days, I would appreciate, or you can do it now, you can do it now, bring, bring forth a motion that I, Audrey Holston-Palmore, and Del Chapalmore, who applied for the event to be held through the Columbus Parks and Rec, thank you for your attention.
Thank you, ma'am.
Y'all, y'all want to do that? Okay.
Doesn't appear there's anybody wanting to speak, thank you.
Okay.
See you in March.
See you in March.
All right, we did have a request to go into executive session, and I believe it's for litigation.
For litigation and real estate acquisition.
All right, and, and, okay, all right, we'll entertain a motion to go in.
Go into executive session.
All right, there's a motion and a second, all in favor say aye, any opposed, all right, we'll clear the chambers. All right, we're back in regular session, we went into executive session to discuss litigation and property.
Real estate acquisition.
Real estate, I'm going to turn it over to the city attorney, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor, I'd like to call up a resolution that's been distributed around the table, this would settle all claims of Matthew Gibson, executor of the estate of James Gibson, for $485,000, it's ready for approval.
Motion second to approve, any discussion, all in favor say aye, any opposed, that's approved. Motion second to adjourn, any discussion on that, all in favor say aye, any opposed, we are adjourned.